Okay. Good evening. Thank you for your patience. Today is Monday, November 1st. I'd like to welcome everyone to our school board meeting, our regular meeting. Board members present in the boardroom are members Wilson, Lessons, Jacobs, Higgins, Donley, and Bellamy. A member Holloman is joining virtually. We also have Dr. Bishop and of course, our recording secretary, Katie Grant. So Ms. Shaw, if you're ready, you can lead us into the pledge with the pledge.
Alrighty. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Before we begin, I would like to acknowledge with gratitude the Dinana people, past and present, who've lived on these lands since long before Anchorage was here. And we all be good stewards of these lands to none.
Thank you. We'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting. Thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and this board. The board thanks our students, our parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, with your talent, and your tax dollars. First on the agenda, or at least it's third on the agenda, is our approval of the agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam President, I move the agenda be approved as submitted.
Is there a second? Second. A second by member Lessons, thank you. Is there any opposition to the motion? Any opposition to the motion? Seeing no opposition, the agenda is approved as presented. And that brings us to section B, item one, our student advisory board report.
Okay, so Student Advisory Board, or SAB, held their second meeting October 12th, 2021 at 11:15 a.m. Student Advisory Board executive members will meet this, executive board members will meet this Wednesday, November 3rd at 4:30 p.m. to discuss plans for our third meeting of the year. That meeting will be on Tuesday, November 9th, 2021, at 8:15 a.m. in this boardroom. At this meeting, the middle schoolers will join us from here on out. So they will start coming, start attending at this meeting, and then for the rest of the school year, they will attend.
Right. Thank you, Ellie. And while we have your attention, I know that there is Association of School Libraries, not libraries, school boards, youth event that's coming up in December. So is that on your agenda? Because we would like, we can get you that information so you can. Okay. And the advisors? Great, great. Thank you. Thank you for that report. Any questions for Ellie? Okay. We do not have a military report, so we're going to move on to our goal monitoring.
All right. Thank you, Madam President. And at your tables, I believe you have the latest and greatest. And at the first meeting of the month, we just go over basically the technical aspects of the report. And this one is on college career and life ready. And although we moved from just strictly graduation rate and destination 2020, we haven't forgotten the graduation rate. That had come up, that that's still an indicator of success. But graduation for ASD is now a floor, not the ceiling. So we want much more from our graduates. But I do want to share with you the report, and then we'll have the discussion and the dialogue on our next meeting. We kept in working with the same template. You'll start to see a pattern of these data reports so that the information can be accessed easily, that we'll get used to finding the information we want, not only for this board, but also the general public. So we start with the goal. And this was the overall board goal of beginning with the freshman class of 2020, which of course was last year. The percentage of high school students graduating life-ready as well as college career or career-ready will increase from the baseline in 2022 to 90% in spring of 2026. We wrote that goal without an item in mind because what we used to only look at was graduation rate. The college career life-ready had so much more added to it. So what I'm going to share, one of the indicators this evening is the graduation rate with you. And that is an indicator that we are using to see, are we on track? So graduating from high school is a strong indicator of success in life as well as college and career. A four-year graduation rate will improve, beginning with the baseline of 82% in spring of 2021 to 90% in spring of 2026. Just last Wednesday, the state certified our graduation rate. So even given students doing three-fourths of their work at home and one-fourth of high school in our buildings are having access, we continue to really not fall too drastically. And this isn't as high as our highest rate, but certainly we were glad to see that number given all the constraints that students and actually faculty shared with us. So to really couch this, I'm going to spend a little time on explaining this so that we know there's a four-year graduation rate that is reported to the state as well as a five-year graduation rate. We continue to look at both of these numbers. But what is the graduation rate and how is it found? It actually is a fraction. And the denominator is an adjusted cohort consisting of the sum of the number of students who first enrolled in the ninth grade four years earlier. And so if you think about this, it is generally ninth grade starts in ninth grade with the coursework for algebra and some other high school courses that give you credit for graduation. We do have seventh and eighth graders to keep in mind, sometimes sixth graders, that actually take high school courses and get credit. We don't enter that credit on their transcript until July 1st if they want. They can choose not to and continue on their course preparation. A lot of times the GPA is affected by that. So we allow that choice. But on July 1st of their freshman year is when we like to add those in. The numerator is the number of students who graduate from high school before June 30th of the reporting year with a regular high school diploma within four years of first enrolling in high school. So June 30th is a key number. And we'll go back that our summer school for students, even though we have a June and July, we really want our graduates or near graduates to finish before June 30th because then that gets them their graduation rate in four years. So with that, the same is true for the five-year. It's again a fraction, and it's again the denominator. It's adjusted for the cohort consisting of the sum of the number of students who first enrolled in the ninth grade five years earlier. So if they're still in our system, they would have, they continue to be in the count. And in five years, how many did we graduate? So you'll see a fluctuation of those numbers in the numerator and denominator. But I have to say as a superintendent that any child still engaged in education is worth it, whether they graduate in four years or five years. And some of us think that, oh, the five-year might have been because of a dropout or, you know, failing grades. There are actually many reasons why our kids stay with us. Some of them have had deaths in the family, so they miss a significant amount of time. They have to take off a semester for an illness. So there's many, many reasons why, in addition to not being successful in their coursework, that students need to take that fifth year. But again, they could go four years and one day. And if that one day is after the fiscal year, July 1st, it's the next year. It counts as a five-year graduation. So I would want to show you just some of the changes. You're familiar with this format. I want to share the scale. Rather than one to 100, like generally our scales share, we have, we started at 50. And I chose to do this, as well as the team when we discussed it, to really share the nuances of the changes. When we had just from one to 100, you could barely tell the difference in the line. So that's really, but I, but in looking at graphs and charts, I'm a chart reader myself. I prefer charts because graphs can do a trick of the eye. But I just wanted to share with the board that that was purposely done. And just also that number that sticks out is 84. That was our highest in the, since 2016. A number that I pulled out in 2005, when the district really started working on things, we had 59%. And so we have increased over the years with a high point. And then of course, 81, when it was 81.7 in 1920. Our high schoolers spent three-fourths of the year in school, one-fourth out at graduation. Last year was the opposite. They spent three-fourths of the school year at home, one-fourth in. And so we're looking at hopefully, although we just talked about in the work session, this has been a heck of a year, a very trying year just for staffing and changes and all that. We're hoping to make a positive impact. But that is a change I wanted you to just cue into there. The next one is set up very similarly. You can take a look. The colors are set up at the bottom to look at on target, near target. Added to the bottom, if you look this, to just pay attention on this chart, is comprehensive high schools, alternative charter, special programs, and special schools, credit recovery. So we separated them to kind of give you a mind's eye. And the last page of this report has those schools defined for you. Move on to the fifth grade. It's our fifth grade, five-year graduation rate. Although fifth grade does count for graduation rate in that every grade counts because we just want students to gain something every year. Graduates and dropouts, I want to share, are not created in high school. It is a lifetime of work for students and staff. So again, the, the five-year rate, this year was 87.4. It was changed similarly. I just want to share with the board again, that was a purposeful change to share really more of the trend so that we can take a look at it. And the five-year cohort N, remember the N is the number of students in that group. You have the five-year on the next page of the different student groups as well as the big catchment groups of, we call them big eight. Those are the comprehensive, if you heard that. Alternative, you might think of things like Polaris, Stellar, King Tech High School, Alaska Middle College, charter schools, and then of course, special schools. So those are the ones with high school. Now, as we get to dropout rate, it's very different. Many people believe that the dropout rate is the inverse of the graduation rate. That's incorrect. It is a totally different metric, okay? And dropout rate is determined by data from students in seventh through 12th grade, not just, again, graduation rate was nine, 10, 11, 12. This is seven through 12. But again, we love the math. It's a fraction. But the denominator again is the number of students enrolled on October 1st of that current school year. So it's just one day and all of those grades, seven through 12. And the numerator is the number of students who have dropped out in the current school year. And by dropout, that means not just left your school. You can transfer to a school in the district. You can transfer to a school out of district. You have to have a leaving school and a receiving school. If you leave but end up nowhere, then that is a dropout. If you just, we don't even know, you know, you left, you just stopped coming, that is a dropout. So it's the manner in which we're coded to know where kids are. Okay? The dropout rate graph changed. It's zero to 10 for the same reasons, because of the small amount in percentages, and the target is less than 2%. So we really want to get to 2% ultimately in '25, '26. It demonstrates where we are and where we have been over the years in reducing our dropouts. And in reducing our dropouts, guess what would help us? We'll have more, if we reduce our dropouts, we're generally keeping more kids, five years. We want to keep them engaged. Sometimes when you drop out, you lose credits. We want to get them back, so it's a good thing to have a five-year. Again, here up at the top, look again, all seven through 12 students. That number's huge, over 20,000. Okay? So I want to cue the board into that as you read through this again. But this shares the different student groups as well as organization of schools to share our goal for where we want to go. And the next sections are also set up the same manner to read the information. The CCL indicators, the graduation rates, and the next steps. We want, you know, greater learning potential and earning potential. Graduation rate, of course, the overall goal is lead to success in life as productive, prosperous, and employed citizens. The goal is about the kids. The instructional focus is about what we're going to do with adults, what we adults do. And the approach at the bottom is arrows in, arrows out. It's kind of that continuous learning cycle of how are we doing it? Implementing, talking about it, building capacity, learning from it, how the kids do. Go back to the drawing board and continually improve our approach for CCL. The next really demonstrates what's going on. The implementation stages are at the top. We are, everything is pretty much in progress, not complete because CCL is so new. Graduation rate is something that we've always looked at. CCL is new, it's comprehensive. We shared information in the Board Connect, the board's newsletter, about just the many different groups involved, teachers involved, principals involved, PMOs involved. But you can see the action steps for life, career, college in general, 30,000-foot view, as well as CCL overall. And the supplemental data at the end, I want to share with you the different schools and their names for dropout only. If you take a look at the alternative, Girdwood, Northern Lights, they're only, that thing is there just for alternative because they're K-8 schools. So their seventh and eighth grade classes go into the dropout rate, not the graduation rate. Because graduation, remember, is only nine through 12. Also dropout only for charters are listed. And then you can really read the other ones that are in there. So just wanted to give the board a mind's eye of the schools in which are in these different catchment groups. And then finally, I did include a chart just so that you can see why I changed and used 50 to 100. But if you would prefer 0 to 100, we can always provide those charts for you. But again, this is just kind of a very fast technical review of the information that you'll find in CCL. And looking forward to a robust discussion about how we're doing. And I'll probably need a few shout-outs on that one to the team working on it because it's so robust and so new as well. And thank you. If there aren't, again, any just specific questions in regard to the technical aspects of the report, I'm happy to answer them or answer them at any time as you come across a question. But look forward to our progress monitoring next time.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Member Higgins, again, this is questions about the technical aspects of the report.
And I'll try to really enter into that way. Surprise everybody. As far as the number of students' graduation rates, when students come in from other districts and they're in their 10th or 11th grade, do they factor into it as well?
They do.
Okay. So, and that's what I thought of. I was kind of curious. A biggest problem at one time was they left the school district. We never tracked them. And they showed up as affected graduation rate, affects dropout rates and the like. This year's got to be an extremely difficult, because you've got so many going, some private schools and everything else. So we, we feel like that's, that's going to impact the outcome, I would think, unless we can really track that. Is that kind of a problem or not?
That's a great question. And because of it, we really have focused on that and understanding where kids are. We did have time last year in really understanding where our kids chose private schools. And we were able to share that information and make those transfers of their records to private schools. And then of course, every year in the Oasis count, we shore up now where kids are with other districts as well. So I would say that over the years, Mike and his team have really shored those up. And it was a big lift really last year when we started seeing such big change. We're starting to normalize of the 4,000 students that left, we have about 2,000 back with us. And others are either, you know, at virtual or homeschool from other places or in private schools. So we do keep an eye on that. And I think now at this point, they've been transferred out, accepted another school. Now we have to pay attention when they come back in. But to your point, it is a very fluid number on any given day. And it's important, especially for dropouts. It is a single number, like attendance on that day or enrollment on that day. So it is tough, but I think our registrars and our counselors at our high schools, you know, they're the ones that see the kids, register the kids. And then of course, the backend support for that. Thanks for, that is a, a good thing to point out because there's a lot of work done at the high schools, especially over the last couple of years. Every school really, but for these data, high schools and secondary schools.
And I recall an earlier study would looked at dropout rates, and it was like three and a half percent. But it seemed like half of those were the same kids that, you got them to come back. They may drop out, but we've got them at least coming back. So some of that number is not cumulative, right? It's really repetitive somewhat that the kids that are struggling may drop out during the year, but they come back again, which is always good news.
Yeah, I mean, that is good news. The actual count of it, although the kids transition in and out, is specific to a certain day and, you know, finishing the year. But I would say that the interest of our big eight high schools especially to keep and define programs that really work for their students is an act to say, let's keep kids engaged. Let's not send them here or there. That we're really working on understanding where kids are and how to move them forward. And teachers have just come up with, really over this pandemic and teaching from home, just different ways to keep kids engaged. So I would say a lot of lots going on in that regard.
Okay. Any other technical questions? Okay, seeing none. We will make sure that, remind board members to get your inquiries, your questions, your wondering, get them into Katie's so that we can be prepared for our next conversation on our goal monitoring at our next meeting on the 16th, where we will really dig into the who, the what, the why, the how, and all of that. So I would appreciate that. And now with that, thank you, Dr. Bishop, we will move on to our public comment section. And we would like to welcome everyone to our public, our first hour of testimony. The board has set aside one hour slot at the beginning of the meeting and another at the end. So all that we don't get to in the beginning, we will get to at the end. Testimony in, each individual will have three minutes to give their thoughts. The school board welcomes the public to observe and contribute to our meetings. But to be productive, our meetings must be structured and civil. ASD conducts public meetings under Robert's Rules of Order, a set of rules for orderly meetings that have been used since the late 1800s. These rules require the board and the public to be respectful of each other's opinion and statements. And I'd like to just review a few requirements under Robert's rules. You, near the door, I think you would have seen a little handout that kind of goes over. Do we have this out? Yeah. It's a blue and white handout. It goes over much of what I'm saying now. But just a few reminders. Do not attack a member's or a speaker's motives. Speakers may point out what he or she believes to be a natural consequence of a board action, but may not engage in speech that personally attack others. Please refrain from disturbing the meeting. And this basically means no cheering, applause, or outbursts. And unless you are testifying, you must be polite to the board and other speakers. Attendees will not be permitted to interrupt the business of the school board. And additionally, no profanity or foul language. There's no place for that in our schools or, which includes our boardroom. Additionally, please keep your masks on at all times, including during your testimony. Your mask should cover your nose and your mouth unless you have a medical waiver or other waiver to not have a mask. And if that is the case, you should see, let the security or ASD staff know. There should be no waving of signs. If you have flyers or posters that you would like to share with the board, you may give them to Katie Grant here to my left. If you give them to the security person or to staff, they will get them to us. As the president of the school board, it is my duty to enforce these rules of civility and decorum. As such, I have the authority to rule any speaker out of order for violation of these rules and others. Further, I will have removed from the meeting anyone who does not heed these rules and fails to conduct themselves in a civil manner. And we have, I'm excited, we have several students signed up to testify. And we will hear our students first. First, we have Abigail Hancock. Abigail, are you here? Yes. Come up to the podium there, the table. And there's a little mouth voice there. Welcome.
Hello. Oh, it doesn't work?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, my name is Abigail Hancock. I'm a former student of the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School, which I will refer to as ANCCS just to shorten it. In the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School, you can find out who you truly are without hatred. Your identity, whether it's your heritage, sexual orientation, or gender, will be valued. I personally have struggled with my sexuality. And the first adult I came out to was my teacher, Ms. Weir, through a writing assignment for a class in seventh grade. A good portion of my class was under the LGBTQ two-spirited plus spectrum. And I've never seen any of them face hate in our school walls. My older cousin, Oliver Tyrell, came out as trans and has said in his keynote speech for elders and youth how comforting and loving ANCCS was and that they respected pronouns and preferred names. At ANCCS, I've seen so many of the students like me get the love they deserve since some kids can't get it from home. Some kids face hatred at other schools for being native from teachers and students. Those kids walk through our doors not knowing their native background, and they find out this other side to them and their story. Here, they can truly be proud of who they are without fear of judgment. Thank you.
Thank you, Abigail. Next, we have Deja Stevens.
Hello, I'm Deja Stevens. I'm also a former Alaska Native Cultural Charter School student. And which I will also be referring to ANCCS. ANCCS has given us opportunities and experiences like elders and youth, fifth and sixth grade camp, and Culture Week. At elders and youth, you're able to get people a similar heritage and hear their stories. Fifth and sixth grade camp was in an old boarding school for natives. You learned about the history that boarding school had and how it felt to be there.
Hold on. Yeah, I think it's back on. Sorry, Deja.
Culture Week allowed us to learn about native traditions we are interested in. All these experiences were made possible by ANCCS. We had speakers come in and teach us different qualities like diligence, patience, and family. So this school has also made me stronger in many ways from being the scared little child I was to a more talkative person that I am now. At first, I was scared to ask for help and talk to other people. But slowly, when I started going there more and more, I started talking more, asking more questions, understanding what was happening, and making new friends of both the staff and students. Thank you.
Thank you, Deja. Next, we have, is it Tikva Barnes? Tikva Barnes. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. How does this work?
Good.
Okay. My name is Tikva Barnes, and I'm also a former student at ANCCS. Yeah. Alaska Native Cultural Charter School teaches about Alaska Native history. And I recently learned that other schools do not educate their kids about that as much. I was very disappointed to find that out because learning the history of the people of this land is something extremely important. ANCCS has provided me and many other kids with a safe place to learn and to be ourselves. Walking into school, I always felt like I was coming home. We refer to ourselves as the ANCCS family, and it truly feels like it. Even after going into high school, my friends and I have kept in touch with our school and our teachers. ANCCS gave me plenty of chances to make new friends. Things like team building with classmates and a middle school AFN trip have helped me meet new people in my school and learn from them. More kids deserve to learn at ANCCS, a school that makes us feel safe and welcome. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to ask Elizabeth Hancock, would you like to testify now, offer your testimony now, since you've brought three of those young ladies today?
Yes, thank you. Dear members of the Anchorage School Board, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak in support of the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School, which like Abby, I will refer to as ANCCS. My name is Elizabeth Hancock. I'm one of the founding parents for the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School. Three of my children have graduated from ANCCS, and I currently have a second grader there. My oldest son, Gary, is the reason I got involved with ANCCS. He was a fourth grader who hated school, always had a stomach ache or a headache that prevented him from wanting to go to school. This is because he was a student with special needs who spent about 75% of his day outside of his classroom in a sped pullout model. He joined the inclusion model of ANCCS in fifth grade, which changed his life as a learner. He went from being far below grade level to on-grade level due to a connection he built with his teacher, who empowered him to take on his learning. Gary was diagnosed with juvenile rheumatoid arthritis in seventh grade and spent most of that year in severe pain, but the only school he missed was to be seen at Seattle Children's Hospital. The most significant success story I have seen with my children comes from Abby. Abby grew up in ANCCS, which has set her up to have a foundation more substantial than I could ever imagine. From day one, she was empowered to become a leader, that it was safe for her to be who she was, that it was okay to be an advanced learner. Her success was all due to the model that ANCCS provided for her, through her teachers, through the traditional learning that happens daily, the fact that ANCCS is such a strong community, more like a village, not a school. The emotional part of learning that comes from ANCCS's values has addressed my children's emotional needs as Alaska Native students and allows them to focus on their academic learning. Even through a pandemic, what I saw as a parent of two Alaska Native Cultural Charter School students versus what I saw for my second son, a student at East Anchorage High School, was night and day. I know my children aren't the only students who have benefited dramatically from ANCCS, and there are so many more that could benefit from the charter renewal for ANCCS. Queana, for taking the time to listen to my testimony, I hope it has helped you to see what the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School does for the Anchorage School District students from a parent perspective.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And moving to the phones, we have Rachel Barabam. Oh, you're here. Welcome, Rachel.
Thank you. Sorry for the surprise.
You have three minutes.
Thank you. I want to thank all of you for your service and for taking the time to listen tonight. So thank you. My name is Rachel Barabam. My daughter is in kindergarten at Inlet View Elementary, and my three-year-old is anxiously awaiting her turn at the big kid's school. I'm here today to do my part as a parent and a community member to ensure that the school board includes Inlet View in the 2022 bond package. As I'm sure all of you know, Inlet View is one of the oldest schools in ASD and has waited its turn in line for the system that ASD has put in place and done the work to prepare for the 22 bond package. To pull the rug out from under students, families, teachers, and our community at this late stage sends the wrong message. It's no secret that great schools are economic drivers. Families consider the surrounding schools when purchasing homes or choosing a neighborhood to live and raise a family. Inlet View is also a great source of pride in our neighborhood, not just for parents, teachers, and faculty, but by all of our neighbors. Our community wholeheartedly understands the great value that this school brings to our community. It is Inlet View's turn to be included in the bond package so that the school can adequately support all the great work and development that is happening inside the school walls each and every day. Lastly, I believe, and I think my neighbors will agree, that including Inlet View will only improve the overall bond passage. The precincts included in the Inlet View community are highly engaged and have some of the most consistent high turnout in the state. So the overall bond package will only be strengthened by the inclusion of Inlet View. Please support our children and our school and include Inlet View in the 2022 bond package. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rachel. Next, we have Eva Gardner. Eva, it's star six to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm a parent in the Inlet View District. I have three kids, and the oldest will be starting kindergarten next fall, so we are future ASD parents, but not quite in the system yet. I appreciate the opportunity to testify as a member of the public with a vested interest in our kids' future education. I'm here to comment on two issues. First, the school district's negotiations with its teachers, and second, the Inlet View bond. On the teacher negotiations, every teacher I know is panicked by how they are going. One very talented student teacher I know loves her school, but is considering leaving the state because she doesn't know how she could responsibly sign up to teach for ASD on a long-term basis. So after a year and a half of really heroic teaching in the middle of this COVID pandemic, when all of the teachers are exhausted and a lot of them are probably already second-guessing their career choice, it feels like they're being told by ASD that they don't matter, that they won't get a raise for three years, which, given the record inflation we're facing, is really a pay cut. I'm an employer, and when I'm dealing with my employees, my goal is never to try and just squeeze everything I can out of them. I try to treat them fairly and make sure also that they feel that they're being treated fairly, and if they make extraordinary efforts, respond with meaningful rewards. But I really encourage the school board to take a step back from its contract negotiations and look at the situation with fresh eyes and some perspective, and really ask yourselves if you're doing right by your teachers or if the process that you're engaging in and the goal you're trying to reach is demoralizing them and driving them away. Second, on Inlet View, I, again, as a parent in the Inlet View District, we purchased our house in that district specifically because we had heard such wonderful things about the school and were excited to have it rebuilt. I strongly support including it in the 2022 bond package and not hunting it further so that you can reassess. That school needs more space, it needs new facilities, it's one of the oldest ones in the district, and we are really looking forward to having our kids go there without being displaced and then for a couple of years and then put back into a too-small building. So thank you very much for your time.
My school is too small.
Next, in person, we have Zach Fields. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to testify. My name is Zach Fields. I live at 1320 K Street, a block from Inlet View. As a future parent of Inlet View students, I have not put in many years and hundreds of hours of work to get to the point that we could replace the obsolete building that houses our neighborhood's school. But hundreds of my neighbors have years of PTA leadership, the parents and South Edition residents who have been on the building design committee and put in that hard work to get us to this place. Inlet View has been studied extensively, as you know, over the last two decades. Key question, should the building be replaced with a new building or should it be renovated? Where should it be on the site? And what's the built environment that's best going to support academic achievement? Because that's really the mission of the school. It's important to recognize how involved teachers have been in the design of Inlet View. Many of the teachers have worked at that school for years, for decades, and their input on what the school looks like, the new structure, is really crucial to make sure that it supports high academic achievement. We also have an incredible principal in Ms. Aaron's, who, as you know, is spearheaded an international baccalaureate program that was just certified in Spanish language instruction. These are the kind of things that as a parent, I really want to have in our local school. So I think about the incredible vision, leadership, and commitment shown by the teachers and administration. And then I think about a building so obsolete that just last week, raw sewage was seeping out from it onto the playground. Does this crumbling facility reflect who we are as a community? Does it show that we support our students, our teachers, or this incredible principal? It's really simple. Inlet View needs to be on the bond in 2022. Our teachers, parents, neighbors, principal have worked too hard, sprawled too far to have the rug yanked out from under them, as my neighbor said, at this late stage. Some immediately adjacent neighbors have provided design feedback on design options as the project goes from 65% to final design, and I just want to express appreciation to ASD for reconvening the building design committee to make sure that all these design choices are reflecting maximum consensus possible in a diverse community. Reasonable people may come to different conclusions about individual design decisions, but I think one thing is clear: our neighborhood overwhelmingly supports this project. And at a recent community council meeting, South Edition broke the internet because so many people zoomed in that actually exceeded the capacity in the community council system, and apparently that had never happened before. So our community did pass a resolution overwhelmingly endorsing Inlet View, and I urge you to include it on the bond. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Beth Kemp, telephonically. Beth, star six to unmute.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello.
You have three minutes.
Good evening. Okay, great. Good evening. My name is Beth Kemp. I'm Zach's neighbor. I'm also a teacher at Inlet View. I've been one for 13 years, and I had two daughters that attended Inlet View. It's an amazing community of children, families, teachers, our staff, our PTA is awesome. We have awesome business partners and neighbors, and as Zach said, our community is very involved and dedicated. So we just became the first elementary school in Alaska to be an international baccalaureate school, the primary years program. We're going to focus on the development of the whole child as an inquiry, both in the school and in the world beyond. So we're really proud of this accomplishment. We've been working really hard on it for the past few years. So I was happy to hear that our bond for the building design of the new school passed last April. Inlet View has been on the top of the list for replacement, as Zach said, for a couple of decades. We're the oldest school in the Anchorage School District, built in 1957, and for some reason, we've always been put on the back burner. I was unable to be on this design committee, but in 2014, I was on one. And we spent a lot of time back then, and unfortunately, another school was replaced, and we were given some repairs. So prior to that, when I started, I used to have to run the water in the morning for about 10 to 15 minutes because it was rusty orange. So that was one benefit of they were able to replace some pipes for us. So now we have clean water for the kids to drink. This year's group has met and spent a lot of time and energy to make this design. Students have been involved, staff, parents, the community, and professionals. They've created this beautiful design that will enhance our new school, and it beautifies the neighborhood. Because a couple of years ago, some of our, actually, the majority of our mature trees around the building were cut down, and currently, the building just looks stark, old, and worn down. The inside of Inlet View needs help, too. Our plumbing, our floors, our ceilings, we have leaks in the roof last week, as Zach said. The primary classroom bathroom flooded due to a backup in the sewer, and our kids in the primary hall were not able to use the bathroom for the last hour of the day. So safety, we also need sprinkler systems. We need our office to be in a safer spot towards the front of the building with a better line of sight. I believe we're the only school in the district without a separate multipurpose room. Our gym is our multipurpose room and our cafeteria, and this makes it extremely tough to work around when we're planning our specials and our schedule for the year. So we need a design that will work for our community. The current design is 65% complete, and let's not waste all that time, energy, and money again. Let's make sure we're...
Thank you, Beth. Next, in person, Patricia O'Gorman. There she is. Welcome, you have three minutes.
School board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Patricia O'Gorman, and I've lived three blocks from Inlet View School since 1979. Our son attended the school from kindergarten to sixth grade. I was the school nurse there for several years and still walk neighborhood children with working parents to the school weekly. I speak in favor of keeping the new Inlet View School on the upcoming bond package. Inlet View, which was built in 1957, is one of the oldest schools in the district. However, the conditions and spaces in the building are far below the norm and hardly meet the standards for safety and optimal learning. For several years, money, time, and considerable thought have gone into planning for a new school. Neighbors, parents, along with architects, design experts, and ASD personnel who work with students weighed many concerns, district and city guidelines, and regulations in coming up with the design. It's been reviewed by the South Edition Community Council, and improvements to the design have been voiced and acted upon. There will be opportunities for more input as the design is finished. This is not a reason to delay the vote to 2024. One example of concern was loss of green space to parking spots. It was more than needed per regulations, and ASD has already responded. Additionally, the building height was at 37 feet and now has been reduced to reflect the neighborhood height restriction of 30. Three neighbors who are adjacent to the school property are now being included in the ongoing building design. This gives me great confidence that there will be, when there are reasonable changes requested, they will be given serious consideration. In many ways, Inlet View is a hub of our neighborhoods' community. We use it as a neighborhood park to walk dogs, to ice skate, and a playground for children of all ages. I believe it'll remain that way, but its first and foremost role is that of a school to the students. I urge you to keep the Inlet View School on the April 2022 bond package for the public vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, telephonically, we have Sarah. I think it's Sherek. Sarah, it's star six to unmute.
Can I hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Welcome.
Great, thank you. And I apologize if you hear my two-year-old in the background. I am a non-teacher taxpayer and parent of a two-year-old teacher-student in the Inlet View District, and I'm calling regarding two issues. First, to express community support for Inlet View on the 2022 bond. And second, to express support for teachers' raises and continued grading days in the contract negotiation. So first, in regard to Inlet View, I feel strongly that the project should proceed as planned and be put on the 2022 bond. Replacing the school sooner allows hundreds more students to benefit from a safer and more functional school this decade. Substantial taxpayer dollars have already been invested in the current plan, and as a taxpayer, I would be really upset to know that hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars spent on engineers, architects, and the like might be wasted if the current plan is changed and those professionals have to go back and start near square one on a new plan and redo all their drawings, architecture schemes, engineering plans, et cetera, in response to Johnny from lately NIMBY concerns. In any event, I think those concerns have already been addressed, and as the previous testifier mentioned, are being incorporated into the ongoing plan. And I know there have been many impact studies and scoping plans that looked at those as well. If height is the primary concern for neighbors in the area, then they only need to look to the church just down the street that is already around two stories high in the same area. As for age, the engineers have done thorough studies to confirm that it's more cost-effective to replace rather than just modify around the edges, a building that's older than most of the people on this call, older than the state, and is the oldest building in the ASD. The issue of cost-effectiveness brings me to my second point. Taxpayer dollars are far better spent on getting teachers' raises rather than paying for a second round Inlet View plans when the first round of plans have already been paid for and are terrific and should move forward now. So on teacher and contract negotiations, as a matter of fairness, the earlier testifier noted that as an employer, she wants to make sure her employees' deals are treated fairly. And I want to follow up and say that as a non-teacher taxpayer and simply a parent supporter, I hope that my children's teachers feel that they're being treated fairly, and at present, I don't think most do. I don't want you to save my taxpayer dollars by not giving teachers' raises. I want you to use my taxpayer dollars to keep quality, experienced teachers here. Those are the teachers that I want for my children. And I think teachers deserve a raise that keeps pace with inflation at the very least. Without that, their salaries effectively go down year to year under the current plan. And as you know and are trying to address, and I thank you for that, a high number of teachers are already leaving the state, or if they're staying here, they're leaving the profession, in part because it's increasingly financially challenging for them to keep their jobs. Providing raises allows quality and dedicated teachers to stay in the profession, which is a goal that we all share. And last, on the issue of grading days, as I understand it, taking away grading days in favor of more PD does not allow teachers to assess student learning and effectively respond to individual learning needs or communicate with parents as well, which is particularly important in closing learning gaps that have been spread even farther during the pandemic. So in closing, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, in person, we have Joseph Shepherd. Joseph Shepherd. Welcome, sir. You have three minutes.
Hello, members of the school board. My name is Joseph Shepherd. I am an engineer in the community and also was a student at Inlet View in 1989. And I moved back to Alaska recently, brought my kids up, and promptly enrolled my kids in the school where I went, and walked down the halls and realized that nothing had been appreciably changed about the school since I had gone there as a student in second grade in 1989. Also, as an engineer, I have been involved in many school renovation projects. I have also been involved in the construction of new schools. I've been involved... I've been involved in the quality oversight of new schools. And quite frankly, looking at the structures and the systems that are in view, it's really not worth the repair. I mean, not only, like, as somebody who's not as intimately familiar with this project as others are, other engineers have looked at this as well and determined that the cost of replacement is simply lower than the cost of renovation. And, you know, prime examples that have been brought up already is the air handling systems that are in the school are insufficient to meet the air quality standards that are required with COVID. Also, classrooms normally swing 30 degrees uncontrollably, either hotter or colder. I know one of the things that my son complains about is that sometimes his classroom can be hot as 90 degrees, other times it can be as cold as 60 degrees. Also, the other point that was brought up last week of the raw sewage leak as a result of bugs in one of the classrooms. I know also the roof has had repeated leaks. And the other thing, too, is simply the layout of the school doesn't meet those needs of modern students. And, I mean, to me, it's also the community needs the work. I mean, there needs to be, you know, construction projects that are going on right now to benefit members of the community and give people jobs. And there's that other added benefit of new construction. I mean, personally, I will not be involved in this project, but I know other engineers that in the last year and two years in COVID, with people, you know, canceling projects and things slowing down and other projects being slowed down and delayed in the slope and oil field, it's like our community needs the work. And particularly if our members of the community are willing to vote for and approve the bond package, I don't see any reason that we wouldn't replace the school. And I mean, I understand that there are some concerns from members of the community about the design, but as the point has been brought up, the design is not completed yet. And it seems at this point to cancel a project is kind of throwing the baby out with the bathwater. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, in person, David Hanson. Welcome, David, to have three minutes.
Hey, thank you so very much. First of all, thank you for hosting this. I'm really excited to come here and talk. My name's David Hanson. I'm a wildland firefighter for the state of Alaska. I just got back from a really long season down in California. Also, I think, to note, I graduated from the IB program, I think, the first year at West High School there and a community member of the South Edition. I vote for school bonds almost as a matter of principle. I'm excited for schools and I support schools and I really love Inlet View Elementary School. I love what they have there. I think they have an excellent student body, great staff and teachers and an excellent principal. What they also have is a really great situated, a school that's situated in a really great spot and they've got a great surrounding community. So when I voted for the 2020 bond to redesign Inlet View, I read the following, and I think this is verbatim. Design funding to replace Inlet View School, including the demolition of the existing building and the construction of a new school on the existing site. And so I read an if this, then then statement. We would demolish Inlet View and then we would replace it on the existing site, which I understood and I think many common voters would be on the north end of the site. This has many benefits, not only for the school, but the surrounding community. It provides a southern large field for children to play in. And then also at night and during the weekend, you have community members meeting there, not only to walk dogs, but also to meet each other. You have surrounding neighbors with eyes on the street that sort of look at this field and this school and take so much pride in it. So I was wildly confused. Oh, no, what's that? When the proposed design actually puts it on the opposite end of the field than what the bond said. And so I read bonds and I'm excited for them, but I understand them to be an agreement. And then when that agreement broke and it makes me question kind of what's going on here. And so I would really like for there to be a way for my community to understand that I am in big support of Inlet View and Inlet View rebuild, but find a way to fund it, but also put it back on the existing site. And I think there's a way to do that in an economical, effective and carefully considered manner that includes not only the school, the school PTA boards and individuals directly involved with the school, but that of the surrounding community, because that's where your strength is. It's both the really strong program at Inlet View with a really strong, great principal and also your surrounding community. And it has to be a way to balance the both. And so I would love to fund this school, but I would love to fund the school as it was stated in the 2020 bond redesign. And then I think, last but not least, I'd really like to say, go Orcas. And thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lois Epstein. 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 Thank you, Lois. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Chair Bellamy and other members of the school board. I greatly appreciate this opportunity to testify. My name is Lois Epstein and I am a licensed civil engineer and I've owned a home very close to Inlet View Elementary School since 2005. This is my first time appearing before the school board. As I'm sure you know, our neighborhood is fully supportive of rebuilding Inlet View. South Edition Community Council Resolution that passed overwhelmingly last week endorses putting Inlet View construction on the 2022 school bond. That resolution would have been unanimous if those who proposed amendments, such as myself, were able to engage in complete discussions of the amendments, but the late hour did not allow for that. Nevertheless, in its favor, the resolution requires that deficiencies in the proposed design be remedied. I am here today to summarize those problematic design decisions for you. I'm sure you would agree that these problems are serious enough that they need to be addressed prior to the design moving to 95% completion. The current proposal, developed without input on the building design committee from neighbors adjacent to the school, is for a school at the south side of the school site. The current school is on the north side. The south end design will have serious traffic, parking and green space reduction problems. Our neighborhood has one main entrance and exit via L Street and Inlet Place near New Sagaya. And that entrance exit will be transformed into a giant parking lot with cars idling in the winter, dirty snow piles. Now there's a sled hill in that location and unsafe student walking conditions. Friends who live blocks away near Westchester Lagoon are worried about how difficult it will be to exit the neighborhood with its one-way streets, especially with planned increases in school capacity. Additionally, putting a two-story school on the south side of the site rather than the north side, which is drier, will result in significant shadowing over the grounds and onto nearby homes. Regarding water, the south side design may cost significantly more money to prevent water from leaving the site and impacting nearby homes which already have sun pumps. Regarding shadows, as Alaskans, we all want as much sun as possible and having students play outside in shadowed areas when there was a north side design option seems preposterous. Because of Zoom limitations, not all community members were able to participate in last week's community council meeting. However, more than 100 residents joined, as you've heard. I believe it's possible to get unanimity with a different design, but that will require putting some conditions on the school bond. As Senator Begich wrote to Chair Bellamy this past weekend, quote, "I believe it is possible to draft 2022 bond language that will..." "...dot, dot, dot, ensure appropriate and thorough consideration of all proposed plans rather than simply rubber stamping a single plan with inclusive representation from the community and stakeholders," end quote. Thank you for considering Senator Begich's approach when you act on Inlet View.
Thank you. Next, we have Bonnie DiArman. In person. Welcome, Bonnie. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me this chance to speak. I'm here as an alumnus of Inlet View, a parent of two students. I'm a current substitute at Inlet View and I just bought a new house four houses down from Inlet View. Inlet View is a large part of my life. I'm here to emphasize the safety of the school and that we need to keep Inlet View on the replacement, the Inlet View replacement on the 2022 bond. There's a long list of reasons that the school needs to be replaced. The school board and the administration knows this because the school replacement has been on the six-year capital improvement plan for several cycles. Our safety issues are many. Dangerous pedestrian crossings, no line of sight from the office to the front door. And in the last years, we have had several incidents, including teachers and staff and students confronted by dangerous people that could have been avoided by having appropriate lighting, buffers between the school, playground and streets. Designing a new school specifically to meet modern safety criteria is imperative. Delaying the design and the construction does not address our issues. Construction is not getting cheaper. Anchorage understands our children need to be safe. Please let Anchorage vote on a school bond with the Inlet View Elementary replacement on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Martin Hanson. Oh, you're here. Okay. Thought you were telephonic. Welcome. You were able, okay. All right. Well, welcome. You have three minutes.
Okay, so, my name, my name is Martin Hanson. I live next door to Inlet View School. I've lived there since 1986. I voted for every school bond that I've had an opportunity to vote for. And I'm proud to do so because Anchorage School District has given our sons excellent education. I'm a member and former president of the South Edition Community Council. Last week, I voted to support the community council resolution that was drafted by many neighbors with many points of view. In some ways, this was great because it helped to bring our neighbors together over sometimes divisive issues about the school design. And we voted, and I voted, to support putting the Inlet View rebuild on the 2020 bond. And that was contingent on reopening the design committee because there are significant design issues which were very, very well represented by Lois's previous testimony. Now, what I want to say is I have heard comments that time and money spent on design has already been spent and going back to do a redesign would be a waste of money. And I'm hoping that I can convince you that this concern is exaggerated. At the January 5th, 2021 Inlet View School Building Design Committee, eight designs were considered. Three of them, numbers three, seven and eight, placed the replacement school at the north end of the school property, the site of the existing building and the site that I voted for, as did many people I've talked to, thought we were voting for when we voted for the 2020 school bonds. What I'm asking for you is for your serious consideration and support for taking a serious community look at the design issues that we have brought up. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Mitch Cullum. In person. Yes, welcome.
I have some supplemental material here for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mitch Cullum. I'm a parent of a future student of Inlet View Elementary. I'm also an adjacent neighbor. And I'll start right here with the issues that I have so far. A lot of them have been spoken to already this evening. But I have provided you guys with three preliminary sketches dated October 30th of 2019 that were presented to the Building Design Committee Kickoff Meeting. All of them depict the school on the north end of the lawn. The Building Design Committee Kickoff Meeting Project Overview states its objective as, "Project consists of completing comprehensive design services to replace the existing school on the same site located at 1219 N Street." The currently proposed plan would change the school's address to the 1300 block of Inlet Place. This is not in compliance with the Building Design Committee's just referenced objective. The BDC Project Overview reads, "The anticipated construction budget for this project is $21.875 million." During the ASD October 29th work session last week, it was asked of the ASD project team what the current estimate for the project was. $34 million was the response. How did we go from $21 million this time last year to the $34 million estimate as of last week? What accounts for the $13 million increase? From the casual observer, without the ability to see how these numbers are calculated, I am left to conclude that the south choice, the south end build choice location on the currently proposed plan has accounted for a substantial amount of that $13 million increase in building costs. The recent September 8th, 2021 geotechnical report that was accomplished after the decision to build on the south end was made states, and I quote from the second sentence, "The project site is overlain by varying amounts of fill and compressible peat that are not suitable for supporting a foundation, pavement section or gravity-fed utilities." I would like to point out that the one and only con that the BDC noted with the currently proposed plan was, and it's now at the 65% stage, the existing hockey rink will not be available for the school year during construction. As shown with the record turnout of the community council members last week's meeting, it exceeded 100 people on the passage of the resolution supporting the replacement of the school. Yet, asking for more objective analysis of the building options and location choice, we owe it to the next 60 years of students to ensure that we get this right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next, in person, David McCarthy. And welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Parent of a future student, lived 1317 directly across from the proposed school building. A few comments, I am in support of it, but I'd like to read my statement. "Design is a collaborative process in most cases failed through determined by a committee. A building committee specifically the size assigned is not an established group based on all necessary disciplines and without bias. The issues with the committee, it is based on opinions, hypotheses that are not proven to be true or false. This is exactly what went wrong with the process and needs to be addressed. ASD admitted that the communication was not properly noticed to the community council or adjacent neighbors and therefore established that all the necessary inputs or disciplines were not applied to this process. Therefore, we need to create a specific language in the bond to correct these issues, not just hear them and do nothing because the current design is too far along. Design is about creating spaces for people to live their best lives and what we have realized in this proposal is disconnected by the people most impacted by its work, which is our community. We need to work with the parents and the current students. They, like us, have been told many different things and fear sets in. We will lose the school. We will have to drive our kids for two years. We will affect the education, emotional development. While on the other side, we look at the cost properly allocated for the building, taxpayers, green spaces, shaded playgrounds, community members' property, traffic flow challenges and overall neighborhood appeal. We have found absolutely no one that opposes the school replacement. What we found is a flawed process driven by bias that may have unfortunately been built into a project by underlying fears that we would lose this school. These fears cause bad design and potential negative community impacts. This timing of the school replacement while in a pandemic and fear of losing the bond funds created these poor design issues. While being sensitive to the current parents' concerns, we have to look at the true cost of the building decisions for the taxpayers. If building a school on the north side, its current location, on more stable ground ensures a more secure investment in safety in a high seismic area, when we need to find suitable solution for students during this time, like it was originally proposed and approved by the same voters that will decide on the new proposed bond, I absolutely urge you to only support this bond if updated language is placed in this bond that can address the community design issues, cost to the taxpayers, while addressing safety issues to the students and our South Edition community members. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next, Catherine Sullivan. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Catherine Sullivan and I'm a proud Inlet View alum, along with my sister, my brother, my parents, my cousins, my aunts and uncles. My mom is turning 75 this year and she went to Inlet View. I'm not saying my mom is old, but Inlet View is. We are a very proud Inlet View family. I'm very much looking forward to sending my son, who's three, to Inlet View in a community. I'm very much looking forward to sending my son, who's three, to Inlet View in a couple of years. In recent weeks, it's become apparent that funding for new construction of Inlet View is at risk of being removed from the 2022 school bond proposal. I cannot overstate how misguided that is. Inlet View is over capacity. The building as it currently is, is not up to par with the quality education that ASD strives to provide for your students. I understand there is trepidation from the school's immediate neighbors about the 65% design recently submitted. But to deny this beloved school a place on the ballot because of some plans that are already being remedied is to cut off your nose to spite your face. Please do what's best for Inlet View's current and future students and keep Inlet View's reconstruction on the school bond package. Again, thank you for allowing my testimony tonight. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Uh, next, telephonically, we have Amanda Tater-Kulik-Compson. Oh, she's here. No, ma'am. Thank you. We will circle back up to her when she gets here. Deborah, you're next. And we'll, we'll come back to Amanda when she gets here.
Okay, great.
Hi there.
Hi.
Okay, I'm Deborah Hanson. I've lived next to Inlet View School for the last 39 years. And the last time I testified about Inlet View School was in the 80s, 1980s, when the school district wanted to close the school. And we neighbors got together and fought that, and it stayed open. Therefore, we're here many years later to talk about reconstruction. I really appreciate your listening to all this testimony. It's really great that you give us a voice to talk about these issues because they're really important to us. What I ask for of you today is that you ensure that the new schools stay on the existing site on the north end of the schoolyard. This will preserve a sunny play area for the school and the neighborhood. Alls I'm asking is that you adhere to your own standards that printed, that talk about the solar, um, the solar specifications and sensitivity to neighborhood scale and context and the northern design principles. Also to conform to the 2040 municipal land use plans to preserve, accommodate, and contribute to the character, scale, and identity of the neighborhood. Inlet View is the heart of our neighborhood. I walk around the school twice a day, most days with our dog. We play there. My husband goes there. We meet our neighbors. I mean, you all see what happens during the school day. We're there the rest of the time. We protected that school. We love that school. We call the police when there's things going on. I weeded. I swept the gravel off when the city wouldn't do it. The neighbors and I shovel. We really keep a good eye on that school. We love that school, but we want to keep it so the kids have a sunny play area and keep the heart of our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Petra Wilm. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Petra Wilm, and I'm on the Building Design Committee for the Inlet View Elementary replacement school, and I've been involved in the design since the start of that committee. I moved into South Edition 20 years ago, so I'm a firmly Asconce neighbor. I'm also an architect, and before starting my own practice in 2007, I worked primarily on schools, both in Alaska and in Portland. I care deeply about the design of that school and how it will look from every side and how it will fit into our neighborhood. I just would like to highlight the conundrum that Inlet View is in for my talk here. Inlet View Elementary was designed in the 1950s. Inlet View improvements have been near the top of ASD's annually updated capital improvements plan for more than a decade. ASD's capital planning and construction determine that a replacement school is more cost-effective than an extensive renewal, and it's becoming more cost-effective with each passing year. Last month, ASD determined the Inlet View ice rink enclosure a safety hazard and tore it down. I forgot to say, these are 10 things I know that I'm just saying here. In the school board bond discussions of 2019, ASD agreed that the Inlet View replacement planning, there have not been any facility improvements at Inlet View, but ASD is reluctant to put a replacement project on the school bond. Other facility improvements that were on the 2020 bond have been checked off the to-do list. So now, Inlet View is caught in a catch-22. It's in too bad of shape to be renewed cost-effectively, but ASD won't put it on the bond if it's a replacement project. Everyone stole my thunder already. Last week, the entire primary wing at Inlet View was shut off due to the bathrooms overflowing. If Inlet View is taken off this bond, there is no certainty that ASD will feel confident enough in two years to put a replacement project on the 2024 bond. We are still left with zero concrete plans for improvement. The idea of removing Inlet View from the 2020 bond has been a real gut punch to a neighborhood that likes to vote for school bonds. If Inlet View remains on the 2020 school bond, I know that many in the Inlet View community will be leading the charge to get this bond passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Petra. Next, Sarah Osborne. Sarah, star six to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Welcome.
Hi, uh, my name is Sarah Osborne, and I'm an ASD educator, a parent of two, and I'm calling in today from Denialand. I want to express my support of including the Inlet View Elementary rebuild in the 2022 bond. Additionally, I want to thank Member Higgins for responding to my testimony at the previous meeting regarding tracking hate speech and slurs in school. I look forward to the work that this board will do to accurately document and address racist, ableist, sexist, and homophobic language in our schools. Further, I want to ask what the district plans to do about the increase in behavior concerns it has noted this year, as mentioned in the email from the Superintendent's Office. As anyone who has been in schools or watched a recent assembly meeting or attended or listened to a recent meeting in these chambers knows, our community is hurting. Behaviors are extreme. So I ask, what is the district going to do to address this hurt and the resulting extreme behaviors? What increase to SEL, to behavior intervention, and to restorative practices will the district commit to in order to guide our students through these unprecedented times? Additionally, we know teachers are not immune to the stress felt across our community. What is ASD going to do to support staff as they in turn support students and families? What is, what is ASD going to do to address teacher mental and emotional health? Now more than ever, teachers need your support. This is not a time to kick staff off of their current healthcare providers or to give them an effective pay cut during this period of inflation and to shift even more work duties to their off-contract and personal time. If we want healthy families and healthy communities, we need healthy schools, and that includes healthy staff. Please support fair and robust AEA and TOTIP contracts. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Uh, next, we have Sarah Davies. Welcome, Sarah.
He is an incredible distraction.
And I apologize for that. Can you just give me a minute, please?
Sir, you are an incredible distraction right now.
I apologize, Sarah. Yes. Will you please stop filming? You are making people nervous, sir. Mr. Williams, but this is our boardroom. He's making, he's making people nervous. We don't have a policy. The, the, the citizen said he was making her nervous, and he wouldn't stop.
I don't think you get to suspend constitutional rights because somebody's nervous.
Member Donley, that was not my intent.
Well, that's what you just did.
It was simply, I never asked him to leave.
Well, I.
Nobody asked him to leave.
I don't think he was disturbing. I, I don't want anybody disturbing anybody else, but I don't think he was.
He was definitely disturbing me. He was filming me.
There are also minors in the room, and I think that's inappropriate to film children.
Thank you. I would like to continue with our public process. I do apologize for, um, your uncomfort.
I, I appreciate your attention.
I don't want to make anybody uncomfortable, but I also don't want to deny citizens their First Amendment rights. We don't have a policy that says you can't.
We agree.
The press comes in here all the time and makes video. If, if he was disrupting, that's one thing. I'm supportive of not allowing somebody to be disruptive. Merely videotaping.
Standing in front of the community with a camera pointed at them is disruptive. Standing in front of the.
Ms. Davies.
Madam President, point of information.
Yes.
Could we perhaps get, um, the individual on the telephone so that he's permitted his ability to testify in front of the board? It doesn't create an actual disturbance of our meeting, please?
Absolutely. If that is what the, um, if, nobody asked him to leave, for the record.
But you did ask him to stop videoing.
I did.
And I want to know where that is in our policies, if it says that just merely videoing, not being disruptive is improper.
As I read in my opening statement, it is my duty to, uh, make sure that we are civil and using correct decorum.
How is he not civil or using direct decorum?
Madam President, I call for orders of the day, please.
Thank you. We are back to our testimony. Ms. Davies, you have three minutes.
I am here to share observations that have led me to the conclusion that the immediate increase staffing of no fewer than two additional security personnel totaling five will directly support the behavioral and institutional health of my Bartlett family. It is widely recognized that we are experiencing global effects of grief and trauma. But on a more local level, I can see that a critical mass of us are not able to return to being regular students, regular teachers, regular staff, and administrators. More often than at any point in my 15 years teaching, I listen to my students talk about their peers wanting to destroy, damage, withdraw, or die. I listen to my colleagues talking about inadequacy, escape, burnout, and depression. We are fragile. And any disruption, small or large, in our sense of peace and our class groups and common areas significantly affects the integrity of our recovery. I see in our Bartlett Student Services Division an amazing group of people with a mega-human capacity for grace, empathy, and restorative action. But they are a ship taking on water. This is no fault of theirs. It is a byproduct of the behavioral consequences of quarantine and an ongoing global emergency. With a population of 1,400, I am witnessing nearly no resources available to manage anything other than high-level emergent concerns. They are in triage mode every day. This leaves all non-threatening and non-urgent student conduct unaccounted in a timely manner. The outcome of that is persistent disruption of peace inside our Bartlett home. It is like a white noise of angst. There are mountains of data and metadata in our system to validate the placement of the additional security personnel to address these low-level concerns, that it will restore a great deal of peace and allow our family to continue to pursue the health of our students and our personal health. We may not have recognized this need when discussing COVID relief allocations already, but Bartlett's security is a high-need item to attend to that warrants discussion on the redistribution of previously earmarked funds. When you enter your work, your next work session, please allow us a place high on your agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah.
Madam Chair, I appeal the decision of the chair in ruling that we can throw people out or have them discontinue videoing without them being disruptive or in any way impinging the progress of this meeting. I believe that is a blatant First Amendment constitutional violation. I totally support maintaining order of this room, but in four years, I've never seen somebody told they couldn't do a video as long as they were being respective and quiet, not disrupting the meeting. Parents do it all the time in here. To be able to pick and choose who you want to be able to do it is completely unconstitutional.
That was not my picking and choosing. The, the witness who was here was uncomfortable with him doing that.
Witnesses don't get to determine other people's constitutional rights.
Member Donley.
Point of information, Madam President.
Yes.
I'm not, uh, I don't recall the chair making a ruling that's being referred to.
I did not make that ruling.
Okay, so I, I would, I would ask that we return to orders of the day, please.
So, did you or did you not instruct the security? Did you or did you not instruct the security to tell the individual to discontinue videotaping?
I'm over here, the security's over there. No, I did not.
Okay, so we do not have a policy, and we're not going to ask people to stop, parents or anybody else, to stop videotaping unless they're disrupting the meeting. And we're not going to do it just because one other person doesn't want it to happen.
One other per.
Yeah, a witness or anybody else. It has to be a reason.
So your point is well-taken. We are going to continue this meeting, and if you have other issues with what just happened, we can talk about it at another time, Mr. Donley.
I'd like to know how we're going to proceed, because if the chair is just going to tell anybody anytime that somebody feels uncomfortable, you're not going to be able to videotape. I got a real concern with that based on the Constitution of the United States of America, the First Amendment.
It is very clear that you do. We are continuing with the business of the board.
I appealed the decision of the chair, and I maintain my appeal.
We are continuing with the business of the board.
Point of order, Madam Chair, when there's appeal, a decision of the chair, you need to vote on it.
Madam Chair, point of order.
Point of order. What is your point?
I, I maintain that I did not hear the chair make the ruling in question, so I'm not sure how I can vote on the appeal of the chair.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to have a conversation in this? I did not ask anybody to leave. I was responding to the, 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 the citizen who was uncomfortable. She talked to him. I never spoke to the, the security person. And we will allow the gentleman to testify if he so chooses. That is, the point of order, it is there.
The point of order was the chair instructing security to have somebody discontinue videoing, and they were doing so in a non-disruptive manner.
What I'm saying, sir, Mr. Donley, is I, why are you attributing that to me? I did not.
Because that's exactly what happened.
Five-minute recess. We will be back in five minutes. I apologize.
I'm sorry.
What time did we break? I'd like to call us back to order, please. We'd like to welcome everybody back. Katie, would you adjust the time, please? I think we are, I can't remember where we were before the disturbance. So we'll go. So we have an additional 15 minutes of first-hour testimony prior to the interruptions. And so I'd like to welcome everybody back. Thank you. Next, we have Gretchen Warman. Gretchen is a student that somehow we missed earlier. So thank you for waiting, Gretchen. We want to get our students in within the first hour, whenever you're ready.
I'm Gretchen Warman, and I think that Family Partnership gave me a lot of opportunities, and I would really like to graduate here in 2030. Thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen. Gretchen also made signs which we're handing out to, to board members. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Why don't you come on up, Amanda? We, we could circle back to you.
This one's hot?
Yes. Thank you. You have three minutes.
I appreciate it. I am going to take a couple of my, my seconds here to say thank you for letting me circle back in later. This seems to be a very exciting meeting. I'm very happy to have witnessed some of it, and thank you for listening to this. My name is Amanda Compton. I grew up on 12th and P Street in the 80s and 90s. That's the late Senator Stevens' house, just for purposes of some state trivia. I attended Chugatch Optional. I've owned the house at 1353 M Street since 2009. Here is exactly what Anchorage voters said yes to. This is the exact bond language. Funding the design of a new school on the existing site. $3.34 million for the new school design on the existing site. Here's what the Anchorage voters did not vote for: A project on the far-south side of the property. The planning committee has spent so much valuable time on this project that they're in too deep to see anything but the attributes. I was told, and keep reading, that there were outreach attempts, but it should be telling that no one speaking in opposition of this was aware of these plans until last month. No one in full support of this lives in close proximity to the proposed site. My house is the closest proposed, is the closest to this proposed project. While I don't want 24-hour lighting 90 feet from my bedroom, I do want a new school. My brother's family lives in the house I grew up in. I have a niece, and I have a nephew poised to attend Inlet View in two and three years. But a vote to keep this school in the current proposed site is a vote for a win-lose scenario when there are win-win solutions out there. Who gets hurt if this is, who gets hurt if this school is cited for a location advantageous for the entire community? No one. Who gets hurt if these plans are pushed through? A lot of us. Changing the voter-approved construction plans and price while simultaneously pushing adjacent neighbors out is a disheartening model for ASD developments, and the Anchorage School District has an opportunity to uphold a more outstanding and democratic process. Right project, wrong place. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Next, we have Christian Haisch. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Christian Hike, and I'm a math teacher in the Anchorage School District, and I've been one for almost seven years, and I'm a current member of the bargaining team for AEA. But today, I'm speaking to you as a teacher from Polaris K-12, a unique optional school in the district. At Polaris, we have students ranging from kindergarten through 12th grade, where older students frequently interact with and serve as role models, to younger students. Our secondary students have the same teacher several times during their middle and high school, and they see the same advisor every day for seven years. Our school, by its very structure, meets the SEL goals of the district for our students and has done so for decades. Additionally, we frequently build into the structure of our classes differentiated and individual paths to success, which truly provide the multi-tiered systems of support that the district is trying to bring to the rest of the district. We've been doing this for years. So it's a mystery to me why the current administration is obstructing our efforts to educate our students. When I started at Polaris K-12 in January of 2015, we had four more full-time teachers than we do now and an assistant principal. Over the past six and a half years, we've had multiple rounds of cuts to FTE despite having no loss in enrollment and over 900 students on the waitlist. 900. We now have more students than we did when I started, but we now have three empty classrooms, not because we don't have students, but because the district will not allocate to Polaris the staffing level that we need to do the job that our students deserve. In six years, our secondary program has had to change its schedule four times to try to deal with these cuts. We develop plans to provide a quality education of our students and then have to alter those plans year after year to adjust to new staffing levels. We now offer fewer classes, larger class sizes, and are struggling to maintain the integrity of our program. And what is the response over and over again when we bring these issues to higher levels of administration? Well, it looks like you're making it work. We're not making it work, at least not to the level that our students deserve. The Anchorage School District regularly uses our students and school in their marketing products, but works behind the scenes to undermine a shining example of success. We have 900 students on the waitlist. That's twice our current student population. We have more students than we did six years ago and five less teachers and staff than we did six years ago and three empty classrooms. ASD is chronic and worsening intentional understaffing of our program, and others harm students. And for what purpose? What benefit? I really couldn't tell you. I encourage ASD to put resources back into our successful program and programs like Polaris K-12, and I invite all of the board members and superintendent to please come and visit our school and discover what we do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Paula Williams. And she's not on, no one's on the line, actually, so we'll move on. While we're getting Mr. Nile Sherwood-Williams on the line, we'll go to Michelle Martin. Is she on the line? Nope. Michelle Martin?
Mr. Williams? Hi, this is Katie calling from the school board room, and I'm going to put you on speakerphone, and then we'll put the mic up to the phone for you, okay? You are very welcome. You'll have three minutes when the president indicates that. Hold on for just a moment.
Yes, welcome, Mr. Williams. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Nile Sherwood-Williams. I hope everyone can hear the sound of my voice this evening. This is a public service announcement to any members of the community, any of my fellow Anchorageites that are listening to the sound of my voice today. I'd like to tune you into some upcoming things in our community. Tomorrow and Wednesday, the CDC will be meeting to authorize five-to-11-year-olds to have the Pfizer injection, the Pfizer bioweapon jab, the 4th to the 7th of November, this weekend, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at the Anchorage Hilton, the Alaska Association of School Boards will be meeting to discuss the implementation of the strike team plans to inject the bioweapons into children's arms within 96 hours. I urge my fellow Anchorageites, sleeves down for winter. Repeat, sleeves down for winter. Roll your sleeves down and put duct tape around them. Prevent those injections from going into your arms, because once you do, I urge the members of the public, listen to my voice. It changes those people, it changes their DNA, changes the way they act. It moves them to a hive-think mentality, a collective brain, a form of artificial intelligence where they can be controlled by others. Stop the fluoridation of water. We need to, we need to understand that members through the chair, through the board president, members of that board, such as individuals like Tom Roth through the chair, that pointed me out for silently filming.
Point of order, Madam President, calling out names.
I use "through the chair" as is Robert's Rules of Order, Madam President.
Mr. Williams, please continue.
I'm going to raise a point of order also. I, I, I think it might be a valid point. Unfortunately, it wasn't made by a member of the school board.
Just a minute, Mr. Williams. You may continue your testimony. We will add time, we have paused your time. You may continue. He raised the point, he raised a point of order. No, we're, we're continuing with your testimony, but please do not refer to employees by name.
I understand. Okay. So let me just pull the, the board's attention to a naming convention exception within the board's policy. When discussing policies of child abuse, you are able to identify members of the body by name, as well, under New York Times versus Sullivan, it clearly states that we are able to use rhetorical hyperbole and to name individuals in a hostile manner, which may not be something which is generally tasteful. However, it does point to members' motives as well, because they are our elected officials on a board that serves the school district, which has 47,000 children at $13,364 per pupil, with a very poor graduation rate and a reading rate and a mathematics rate that does not even put 50% of the students up to standard, Madam President. We need to stop the injections into the arms of children. Sleeves down for winter. Get your duct tape ready to put around your wrist to prevent individuals from the Anchorage School District from force-injecting your children. I urge parents that are listening to my voice, if you have children in the Anchorage School District and you care about their medical care, you want to make decisions for them, don't let members of the Anchorage School District make it for you. Yank the kids out tomorrow before the CDC, the FEMA, the State of Alaska, the Joint Armed Services Committee, the National Guard, and the Anchorage School District starts force-bioweaponing every child.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Your time is up. Next, we have Allison Shepherd in person. Allison, are you in the room? Not seeing Allison. We'll go on to Eleanor Andrews in person. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Eleanor Andrews. I live in South Edition, and I guess I've lived in three houses over 30 years in South Edition. I've been working with schools here for 50 years. My daughter is currently a family resource coordinator. And it's been a long time since I had anyone in class, but I care. I care about neighborhood schools, and I want to share a short story. Let's share a cautionary tale first. A long time ago, there was $26 million allocated to build a new Alaska psychiatric institute. They changed the design so much over so many years, the money was all gone. And then when they re-appropriated, it was costing over $50 million to build a place that was smaller. That's the cautionary tale. The good news is that in the mid-'90s, the neighbors and principal architects, businesspeople in Fairview got together, came to the school board, and asked them for a new school in Fairview. It had been on the bond request for over 20 years, but the, but the board had not shared with the neighbors was that that bond had never funded urban schools. So I did my research, had my staff looking at things, and we found that there was $24 million left over in construction funds from the district. You'd gotten so efficient about building model schools with five to six architectural designs. We're building lots of schools, so there's $24 million left over. We requested that that money be used to build a new school at Fairview. And as a former commissioner of administration and on the state bond committee, I explained to them that they could defees the bonds, the money that was left over. The district not only got a new school in Fairview, you also got a new school for Northern Lights. So it was unusual. It was different. It was a small footprint, a two-story school, Denali School, another urban school with a tight footprint, got a school out of it. And I think the same situation kind of relates to Inlet View. One thing I don't believe is that the board should be pressed with trying to design the school at this meeting. I trust that there are good people from the district, neighbors, interested people that can get together and come up with a bond package, a request, so that when people vote in 2022, they'll have a firm enough idea about what needs to happen. If we keep fooling around with this, the money's not going to buy what you intended to buy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Next is Kelly Merritt. I'm not seeing her on, she's not online. Moving on to Bonnie Limbo. Bonnie Limbo. Welcome, Bonnie. Mm-hmm, you have three minutes. That's okay.
I wonder if I could stand.
Sure you can, just pull that right up to your mouth.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to address the issue that was raised. People, some people have said when they voted for the proposition and it said "site," they thought it meant it would be on the exact same site as the present school. They wouldn't, maybe they wouldn't have voted for it otherwise, maybe they would. But this is the dictionary definition of "site." A piece of land considered for its use for some specified purpose, that is, a good site for a town. The place where something is, was, or is to be, location or scene, for example, site of battle, to locate or position on a site. What is a footprint? An impression or mark made by a foot or shoe as in sand. So it is clear that the meaning of "site" means the entire parcel of land, and "footprint" is a metaphor for the outline of the building. It's unfortunate that some people misunderstood the wording of the proposal, but that happens all the time in every election and does not have any legal significance. The ballot has been approved by the city attorney and stands as legal invalid until a court challenges, challenge decides the contrary, and the school board must not have the expertise or authority to declare a ballot invalid. Second of all, I, all the objections I've listened to about this design are basically aesthetic. I think the shadow should fall in this direction and not that direction. I think the front door should have the address of this street and not that street. But this is the point. The board, this board does not have to remove the proposition from the ballot to allow for design changes. The design will have to meet the requirements of the law, the requirements of the zoning code, of the fire and safety code, and traffic design standards, or it will not be approved. Anything else is aesthetic and subject to disagreement based on personal taste, which is not a reason for taking it off the ballot, because it is crucial that it remain on the ballot. There are many problems with the physical plan, among them, no sprinkler system for fire protection, the infrastructure has passed its life expectancy, the school has had more than five hundred and fifty work order requests for repairs since 2018, the school has had temporary relocatable classrooms for more than fifteen years, they can no longer be used because of COVID, because they don't have an air filtration system.
You have, keep going.
Oh, okay, thank you. The, the present school is out of compliance with the district requirements for schools. It lacks a separate multipurpose room, specialty classrooms for art, health, music resources, and special education. It does not meet design requirements for safety and security. In this area, in this era of school shootings, there is no direct line of sight between the entrance and the office.
Now that's, now your time's up. We do, we have it right here. We have it. Thank you so much, Ms. Limbo. And our last testimony will come from Robert Bundy. Welcome, Mr. Bundy. You have three minutes.
My name's Robert Bundy. I've lived in Inlet View since nineteen eighty-three. We bought our house about less than a block from Inlet View because we wanted our kids to go to Inlet View Elementary. Now I have two grandchildren that are going to Inlet View Elementary, and unfortunately, assuming the replacement goes forward, they're going to have graduated before they're going to take advantage of us, so I have no direct personal interest in this. But I have seen the school over the last thirty, forty years, and it's a wonderful school with a wonderful community but a horrible physical plan. The heating problems have been that way for years. When my kids were in school, it was that way, and now when my grandkids are in school, it's that way. And it, it needs to be replaced. And we can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. It's important that the hard and good work of all of the people that have gone into the design committee go forward and go forward without a bunch of nitpicking. There's not the appropriate time nor place to put anything like this on the bond package itself, but let the design committee deal with it. They've worked with it for years now. I've heard some people complain about the place that they've decided to put the building on the site, but those options, what we know is, have been available for a couple of years. We, we, people had documents that showed that the south location of the building has been considered for years, and now at the last minute, we want to change the very bond language that is necessary to get this thing built. If I, I take everybody at their word that they want the building replaced, but if I were against replacing the building and against putting it on the bond package, I would be doing exactly what folks are doing by quibbling over every little thing that's going to make it impossible to go forward. We need to get together. Everybody agrees, that's testified so far, that the building needs to be replaced. The best place to put it is on the south side of the lot. It's not going to change the ability of people to walk their dogs in off-hours. It's not going to change the ability of people to meet and talk. It's going to do nothing at all to change the way the school is being used. What it will do is some people will now be closer to the building than they were before, other people will be farther from the building than they were before. That's all the differences. It's quibbling. There's no reason to change the way it's going to go on the ballot, and it needs to be on the ballot. I think you've heard that over and over again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bundy. And that concludes our public comment section. You may find written comments attached to the agenda. Moving on to sec, item E on our agenda, the consent agenda. Member Holloman.
Yes, Madam President, I move that we approve the consent agenda. ASD memorandum number oh-three-nine, the personnel report, the October fifth, twenty-twenty-one regular session minutes, and the ASD memorandum zeroth, number zero-three-five, request for budget transfer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to approve the consent agenda, memorandum number thirty-nine, regular session minutes for October fifth, and memorandum number zero-three-five.
Shall I do a roll call since we're remote?
Yes, we'll have to do a roll call because we are remote. So we'll do a roll call vote on the consent agenda. Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Vice President Holloman?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
Thank, it's a, there it is, it came up. So that is a unanimous decision to approve the consent agenda. Thank you. Now moving to item F, which are our action items. There is also written testimony attached to the agenda on our action items. Let's start with memorandum number twenty-six.
Madam President, I move to approve ASD memorandum number twenty-six, the approval of the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School charter renewal application for an additional ten years through the 2032 slash 2033 school year. It's further recommended that a strategic planning team be established to work in partnership with the Alaska Native Charter School Academic Policy Committee and administration, supporting their efforts for a successful school to honor our Alaskan indigenous population.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second to approve memorandum number zero-two-six. We have, prior to discussion. Did we have anybody signed up? Yes, we do. We have Melissa Kayler-Aflin. I apologize if I pronounced your name wrong, but welcome.
I think it, thank you. Good evening, members.
Can you, can you turn it on, on the bottom, see the little, yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the school board. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Melissa Kayler-Aflin. I'm a teacher at the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School. I've had the honor of serving the staff of my school as a seat representative of our academic policy committee for two terms. My goal today is acknowledge the dedication, passion, and courage of our staff at our school, and that they are the force that brings our written charter to life as you make considerations today on our renewal. On top of our current district-wide circumstances, as mentioned in previous discussions, our school has endured loss, multiple transitions, relocation, and intense student needs. In spite of these circumstances, our staff goes above and beyond in how they serve our students and families. We love our students and want them to succeed. Our staff honors the child by seeing them first as a person and instilling a strong sense of identity. We strive to uphold the traditional ways of knowing and empowering the next generation of our Alaskan voices. My colleagues do not give up, and I'm proud to serve beside them. I believe in my team and our charter school's mission. Our school is a vital part of the community and can serve as a future model for other cultural schools. As a member of our APC, I acknowledge the work that needs to be done so our school can be the best it can be. The time and effort it will take is worth every sacrifice because our teachers and our students deserve it. During the renewal process, additional charter goals and action planning were discussed. The process has begun and will continue. We will achieve a permanent facility, stable student enrollment, and strong financial backing for our future. Thank you for your time and consideration towards the approval of our tenured charter so ANCCS can continue to be a school where our students thrive through the dedication of our teachers and the support of our academic policy committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Next, we have on memorandum number twenty-six, we have Mr. Niall Sherwood Williams.
This is Katie calling from the school board meeting. You're up for testimony on the renewal of the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School. Okay? All right, I'm going to put you on speakerphone, and then President Bellamy will start the timer. Hold on.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. You have three minutes to testify on memorandum number twenty-six, the charter school renewal for Alaska Native Cultural Charter School.
Whenever you're ready. Niall Sherwood Williams, with regards to the Alaska Native Charter School, I feel as though this should first come from the tribal dollars that are within our state that are meant to fund the Alaska Native programs for the people who are card-carrying Alaska natives or American Indians, as is my fiancee. So respectfully, you're getting the dollars from the wrong budget. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And next, for memorandum number twenty-six, we've, oh, Katrina Alfel? Alfel? Is there Katrina? Not on, it's telephoned, she's not, I don't see her. Okay, not seeing Katrina. That ends our public testimony on memorandum number zero-two-six. What is the will of the board? Discussion. Member Higgins?
I just want to say one thing. I know in the past, there's been studies with different charter schools in regards to success, and they're looking at it demographically, same population, and the, and the academic outcomes, and the Alaska Native charter schools kind of led the path with some of their results compared to other groups in, in the same school district. They, I, I've been there many times, it's very impressive the way they connect with them, they feel welcomed, and I just think it's a, it's kind of a model of why charter schools can be so successful, and I appreciate them.
Thank you. Other comments from the board before we vote?
I'll be supportive of this renewal. This is really more of a passing comment, although I guess nothing on the board is passing. I'm deeply appreciative of the nimbleness with which the staff and students and families have had to respond to their relocation, and, you know, I drove past the other day and students were playing outside, and that's hard work to, to be uprooted and to need a new home. So I hope that we can work collaboratively to support their permanent rehoming in the district as we move forward.
Thank you. All right, Member Wilson?
I recently toured the Alaska Native Charter School. I really enjoyed meeting the staff. I, I really appreciate that they, the students have the opportunity to be exposed to their, their language, to their culturally relevant activities. I, I just want to say I appreciate the work that they were doing, and I am in support of this as well.
Thank you. Member Holloman, I see your hands up.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to add that, that the charter schools and the alternative programs and the different things we have provide a big variety for what we just call fit, fitting students into a situation where they thrive. We heard it from some of the student testimony earlier, that they find a home there, and a lot of our kids find that home in their neighborhood schools. A lot of our kids find that home in the alternative programs that we have all over the district. The charter schools are even more different and, and often serve students that just wouldn't function as well in our regular schools. So I, I think Alaska Native Charter has done a wonderful job, and it's neat to see that they're going to be there for ten years into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And I ditto everything that everybody has said. I think one of the first opportunities, when I first came on the board, I had to visit the Alaska Native Charter Cultural Charter School, and the subject was owls. And we talked about, you know, how they were known for their good judgment, decisive action, insight, keen vision. This is exactly what this school represents, and I just think that to offer that, this opportunity, I'm proud to be able to support the renewal of this absolutely fundamentally necessary program. So with that, any other comments? We can vote. Do the vote. Yes. Thank you. Now we'll do a roll call vote. Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Vice President Holloman?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
And that's, passes unanimously. Now we move our attention to item F-four, which is charter school renewal for Aquarian.
Madam President, I move that we approve ASD memorandum number zero-two-seven.
Madam President, I move that we approve ASD Memorandum Number 027, Charter School Renewal for Aquarian.
Second. All right, we have one person signed up. And that is Mr. Niall Sherwood-Williams. It will take just a moment.
Hi, Mr. Williams. This is Katie calling from the school board meeting. We'll get you on the phone for three minutes of testimony for the charter renewal for Aquarian Charter School. I'm trying to speak to the phone. Hold on for just a moment.
Welcome, Mr. Williams. You have three minutes to speak on the action item for the renewal of Aquarian Charter.
Thank you. Niall Sherwood-Williams, for the record, with regards to the renewal of the charter for Aquarius School, I would urge the members of this board to look at what gives you your ability to operate as a school district, which is the Alaska State Constitution, Article VII, Section Number One. And within there, it states that you cannot use dollars or money for religious or sectarian viewpoints, meaning you cannot teach religious doctrine, scientific doctrine, in schools. So I urge the members of this body to look into the fact of whether or not Aquarius Charter School has any taught religious or scientific principles which may violate their Alaska constitutional and statutory abilities to operate as a school district. Article VII, Section One. And again, I urge the members of that board, and especially the president, to not censor speech, which is given under the First Amendment of our United States Constitution. Look at what happened to Attorney General Merrick Garland. Do not try and show speech of parents or constituents at school board meetings. That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Oh, board members, I think that's the only testimony we have for that action item. Yes, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to share that administration has full support of this and does not believe that any ill actions are taken in breaking the law for Aquarian Charter School. Thank you.
Any other comments from board members? Member Lessons?
Sure. Thank you. In my short tenure here on the board thus far, I've had the chance... Aquarian is one of the... It's one of the schools that I get to deal with, is on to. And one of the things that has struck me to a very high degree is the extent to which teachers are... They take ownership of the learning environment in an incredibly intimate way, and when somebody gets excited about a best practice and pursues that, they can become teacher leaders, and they get their peers on board, and they get everybody involved. And I think that that kind of dynamic environment is one in which children can thrive. And so that's just one of the many things that I deeply appreciate about Aquarian and the community that it embodies.
Okay, thank you. I think I saw... Whose hand did I see? Member Donley, did you... Oh!
Madam President.
Yes.
Yeah, as with the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School, Aquarian has fantastic parental involvement and support. I think they have a great program and strongly support them being renewed for another 10 years.
Thank you. Member Holloman?
Hi, yes. I first visited Aquarian in 2012 as the newly-elected president of the Anchorage Education Association. It was kind of a depressing time. We were facing budget cuts, layoffs. It's just a difficult time in the district. And what was startling was the degree to which Aquarian was a happy place. One of the promises of charter schools that we've talked about historically is that they can be incubators, or they can be test runs of ideas that can perhand troll in a building, even to the point of managing resources to get through difficult times. If the staff can be fully engaged and know they have a certain level of autonomy, morale goes up, enthusiasm goes up, the parental involvement goes up, student ownership of the school goes up. So I would urge board members, if you haven't had a chance to visit, you should find time to get over there. It's a great example of what education can be like, and I think there are some things that we could take from Aquarian and push to our other neighborhood schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Donley. Any other board comments? And my only comment prior to us voting would just simply be that one of the things that I am most proud of is the choices that we give to our parents and for their kids. And I do think that 10 more years is probably just a drop in the bucket, but the longevity has proven, and the commitment to this school from parents and kids, even the surrounding community, is exceptional. So I will be supporting the recommendation from the administration. Any other comments or questions? I call... We can vote? Do the vote?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Vice President Holloman?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Higgins? Member Donley?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you. And now that moves us to our non-action items. Is there any item that the board wishes to pull? Member Lessons?
Yes, I wish to pull... I don't even know what number it is. Memorandum 41.
Item one?
Yes, item number one.
Thank you.
The approval of the April bond proposal.
Anybody else? Member Donley?
Madam President, I would request to pull Item Number 25, Memorandum 25.
25?
Yeah, Charter School Renewal Family Partnership Charge.
Oh, Item 5, Memo Number 25. Thank you. Got it. Okay, see no other hands. Member Lessons, you want to speak to Item 041?
Sure, thank you. You know, until about two and a half or three weeks ago, I really was oblivious to anything that was happening at Inlet View. And then, all of a sudden, things were happening. I visited the school. I walked the soggy ground with neighbors as snow started to fall. I went into a neighbor's house and assessed the height of the trees on the south end of the site. I looked at design plans. I called professionals and stakeholders, watched the Zoom recordings of the community presentation, attended the South Anchorage Community Council... It's not South Anchorage, South Edition Community Council meeting, certainly read testimony for tonight. And I went back into Board Docs to really understand what the last 10 or so years has looked like for the Inlet View community. I think one of the most interesting turning points was in September of 2018, when the board received a recommendation to create a two-story building, given the expectation of urban development in and around that area. The capacity of the school, the board was told at the time, didn't meet the needs. I think in looking over board policies and in looking over the board... I don't know, the scope of the board's prerogative and other documents, I'm uncomfortable right now with our board policy, because I think in a way it sets schools up for failure, if not just a lot of dissent. Not failure, but I think that the board policies don't set the bond proposal up for success because they don't explicitly state that there needs to be neighbor... That neighbors need to be a part of that design process. So in the future, I hope that we can address that issue. I do want to, as is all background to say, my question for the administration is what happens if we put Inlet View on the bond for this April? Could you walk us through the next steps, please?
Sure, absolutely. And Tom Roth, would you like to come forward? And we've had many discussions at the board level where bonds have changed at the board level. So, Tom, if you want to come up and just share the process from here. Meaning it's not unusual to do this.
So through the president to Member Lessons, with regards to making specific changes to the bond proposition that the administration addressed with the board two weeks back and is now with the board for non-action, so it would require that a member would submit a request for modification to the six-year plan, and then the board would deliberate and then act.
Did you... Did you have a follow-up?
Sure, I do have a follow-up question. If the board moves forward to place Inlet View on the bond, given the fact that it appears that the building design committee will be reincorporating new input, what does... What would the language on the bond look like? When does the language on the bond get written, and what would that look like?
So, through the president, I guess I'm not completely understanding the question. When the... When the board acts on a bond proposal, it goes to the clerk for...
The municipal clerk?
Yes, ma'am. The municipal clerk for introduction on the assembly schedule for action. As a part of that, we also draft language that will go on the ballot, and it's very specific to what the district is requesting the voters to vote on, which, in this example specifically, is for a replacement school for Inlet View Elementary. That language would not have any reference to things like location or design. It would be specific language to what the request from the voters is.
Okay. Let's do a sweep. Any other questions on Memorandum 041? Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. I absolutely support a major remodel being conducted at Inlet View. I believe it's overdue, needs to be done, and I believe we could do a major remodel there and save the taxpayers as much as $14 or $15 million rather than tearing down the old school and rebuilding a new one. And we could keep it at the existing site to address the concerns we heard from quite a few people tonight. I kept notes on, as far as the site that's been selected for the new two-story version. I generally oppose two-story schools. I believe they're a bad idea. Our basic format for elementary schools is a one-story school, and I hate to see us do any two-story schools. I don't think it's necessary to meet the demands that are within these neighborhoods in this region to do a two-story school. I personally attended ROMIC, and I hear it's better today, but it was a nightmare changing classes there. And this is an elementary school, so they don't have the same problem with ROMIC being two-stores. The... We did a very successful remodel at Turnigan, which is right next door to Inlet View. That was, I believe at the time, the oldest school in the district that hadn't been remodeled. And I encourage anybody to go to look at Turnigan today. It is fabulous. It really looks great. And that was a major remodel of a very, very old school. And prior to, just a few years ago, this board had a policy that we were not going to do rebuilds on schools. That was a written policy of this board, that when the... After the earthquake happened, there was a proposal brought before us, and it was explained that we needed to amend that policy to facilitate the earthquake bonds. And I strongly supported the earthquake bonds, so I agreed to that. But it was never discussed at that time that that was going to suspend our policy in favor of not doing major new schools, but instead doing remodels and addressing the backlog of major maintenance. I think that's the better policy for this board to pursue because of the volume of major maintenance we have and the fact that we could do probably two major remodels for every proposed brand-new total rebuild we have on the six-year plan right now. And that is another issue. I mean, if we had unlimited resources, I agree that ultimately the most economical step forward would be to rebuild some of these older schools. I mean, to just tear them down and rebuild them. But this community doesn't have unlimited resources. Our property taxes have gone up and up. I'm paying a fortune now compared to what I was paying even 10 years ago, I think. And I really think voters are going to be very concerned about a school district that's down 6,000, 7,000 population over the last few, five years, six years, and building a brand-new school, when a major remodel can be done so successfully like it was done at Turnigan. If you look at our six-year plan, which this is the first step towards, well, for this next year's bond, you'll see it also includes now, for the first time, the proposal before us, new schools, complete tear downs and rebuilds at Tudor Elementary and at Wonder Park Elementary. So we're adopting a really dramatic change in policy here because we've got three schools on the six-year plan to be torn down and rebuilt, at probably close to $100 million, Madam President. That's just an astounding amount of money that could be going spread out among many more schools and to do many of our long-awaited major maintenance progress projects. And if we take a look at the three schools that are being proposed, Inlet View being the first one, four of the five surrounding current elementary schools have populations below 80% capacity right now, the lowest being Turnigan or North Star at only 67%. I have to think, I wasn't here then, I've heard about it, that that was one of the reasons the board, back about a decade ago, thought it was time to just shut down Inlet View, because there was such capacity at all the surrounding schools. I don't support doing that this time, but I don't support tearing it down and building a new school, especially if there seems to be soil issues. I'd like to hear more about the soil issues that were testified to tonight. But when there's... One next school right next door has only 65% capacity, and another, Turnigan, only has 69% capacity, and four of the five schools it's next to are below 80% capacity, it really begs the question of why we invest $30 million in a new school at that location rather than shifting population around and then building probably a smaller school that would actually meet the current demands. And before I go on to the next two schools that would be subject in following this pattern, I'd like to discuss those demands, because it was only two or three years ago that Inlet View was not considered to be overpopulated. It was after the administrative change in how we measure school population that it became overpopulated. And it is, under that new standard, overpopulated, but not... It wouldn't be overpopulated if not for the students that go to school there that don't live in the attendance district. The administration has allowed their parents, and, you know, I really support parental choice, to drop their kids off there, even though they're not in that neighborhood. And if it wasn't for those children, the school would not be overpopulated, and we wouldn't need a two-story school on a different location. So it seems like an awful expensive price to pay because we want some parents to be able to... able to continue to drop their school, their kids off there when there, there's four schools right around there, including a brand-new school at Turnigan, that are under 80% capacity. Now, let's take a look at the other two schools that would follow this pattern on our six-year plan. The first is Wonder Park. Three out of the four schools adjacent to Wonder Park are below 80% capacity. Let's take a look at Tudor, which is currently only at 70% capacity. Oh, by the way, Wonder Park's only at 58% capacity right now. Take a look at Tudor, currently at 70% capacity, but it's on this six-year plan for a complete tear down and re, brand-new school. Two of the four schools next to Tudor are below 80% capacity, including Kasum, which is tied for the lowest capacity, the lowest current population of any elementary school, not on the military base, of 57%. And yet, rather than readjust to absorb that vacant capacity in those neighboring schools, we're going to tear the school down and build a brand-new one. Well, I wish, I wish, you know, my family budget could do that with things. I mean, it's just maybe because government can afford to do things that way, but that just doesn't seem logical to me, Madam Chair. And then, if you just go one school over from the Tudor area, you run into Abbott Loop, which is only at 64% capacity. So, I do not support tearing down existing schools to build incredibly, you know, incredibly expensive new schools. I do support main, doing maintenance and doing major remodels to the schools that need it, which I agree these schools do need it, I support that, but especially when our, when our current population at so many surrounding schools is under 80%. So, those are my concerns with, with this particular project and how the six-year bond seems to be coming together with these three major school projects on it.
Okay. Thank you, Member Donley. So, we have member, I just want, because we, we're not voting tonight. We're just simply discussing, and I'm trying to keep a tally. So, new school, is that your? Yes. And renovate, is that correct? I'm just trying, okay. Thank you. Member Higgins.
Thank you, Madam President. My, Member Donley's testimony prompted a question for myself. It sounds like the board, up until relatively recently, but still, well, Mr. Donley was a member, had a policy of looking to renovate their repair schools when possible that was modified. I am curious as to, my understanding is that the Inlet View's been on the bond multiple times, and just two years ago, a bond was passed, which included language for design for a new building, which passed this body, although I wasn't on it at the time. I'm curious as to if we could go back over the calculation as to why we're arriving here that the new construction is best and the wisest use of district resources. Thank you.
Through, through the President to Member Jacobs. So, these, these are all, they're all, they're all great questions or valid questions. To be sure, we've, we've talked a lot about the condition of the plant, the building. You've heard testimony. I think that's all factually accurate. We've known Inlet View as a building has been in, been in significant need for a long period of time for, for major renovation. And then, again, as, as time goes on, we talk about the cost to renovate, it, it does become a cost-benefit analysis on a new building, which would eliminate all the deferred maintenance for that building as opposed to a renovation and then continued renovation of a building, again, built in the late 50s. But Inlet View's kind of different than that. The resident student population that resides within the boundary right now, by my look recently, you have 306 students that reside within Inlet View. And Member Donley is correct that a number of those students come into that school from out of zone. That, that, that number is about 70 kids. But you have about 150 kids, 80, 80 that attend charter schools, and then about 70 that go to other schools within the district. But you still come back to that population of 300-plus kids. It's also been noted that it is the, the long-range plan of the municipality to focus development in the South Edition area with, with the hoped intent that that, that the, the neighborhood will increase in size, building up. So, we're also anticipating that as well. So, Inlet View, it's old building, but it's not big enough to house the population that lives there now, and it certainly is not going to be large enough to accommodate the population that the city is anticipating here within the next few years.
And thank you, Tom. And I would like to also add, in just understanding facilities, and I don't know if some of the other questions were rhetorical because we shared some of the information last Friday. We don't build, especially if you're going to make this huge investment for today, you're actually looking into the future. And many of the community folks talked about the future, and we do look into the future. And so, not just now, into the future. There is a look by the state of Alaska. There's a bill that will come to fruition, not, that's being considered at the federal level as well as the state level for universal pre-K, which would then allow additional Anchorage School District students to attend schools. And so, we are keeping an eye on all of those sizes of those schools that Member Donley mentioned. And we're keeping a keen eye because if we can expand pre-K, universal pre-K, we would want a facility to do it. And I'd also like to add that this board just celebrated tremendously choice and opportunity. And I absolutely support any school that is good for children. We had so much, you know, support from the community, like in support of growth if it is a choice school. And so, those were some of the reasons, I think, in the expansion of it. It just became an IB school, so it's a lotteryed school. There's many different reasons why that facility was looked at differently, not to remove choice from our parents, but in, you had lots of testimony tonight about thinking, you know. In addition, Friday, we did mention, there is some look at our area-wide schools and how they're being utilized, even in addition to the space that might be needed for pre-K. There will be suggestions on changes of bus routes coming to this board. There will be suggestions on other uses for facilities to this board. And so, we shared that on Friday, and it's just, it is so emotional, so, so much time needs to take because we don't have trend data right now to understand. The pandemic has put us in this understanding of where are our kids going to land, where do parents want to be, where are they going to go to school? Some of our parents during this time actually had to experience homeschool, and they, they love it better. It offers more opportunities for them and more flexibility. So, do we know, will they come back? Will they not? What? We are allowing the trend data of what our community wants to allow us to move into the future. And so, those were some of the, the points from last Friday that I also wanted to reiterate tonight since the question was re-asked. Thank you. Uh, Member Jacobs, you're, you had a follow-up?
No, Madam President. I think that's a care of it. Appreciate it.
And so, in terms of a straw boat or position, new or renovate?
I support a bond that our communities would support, and I think we've, we've heard loud and clear over the last few weeks that the, the proposal to approve the project that began two years ago needs to continue, so I support it as well.
Thank you. All right. Member Higgins.
You know, when I got on the school board back in a long time ago, it seems like, I remember that one of the things that the school district was frustrating with me with, was they would take the lowest rundown school and rebuild it, and so you didn't put the maintenance into it because then you would never get your school rebuilt. And like, that hasn't been happening in ASD since, like it used to be. And I, but I do see in the case with Inlet View, when you know you're planning on something that's been scheduled that way, you defer things so long that the cost factors get to be pretty dramatic. I don't like that approach of postponing things indefinitely and the like, but those things all contribute to the need to, to look at Inlet View in light of the, the level of, of need for changing that school. And, and we go back to the issue of, you can't, I don't want to ever get to the point where we say kids can leave a district, but they can't come into it. It's a trade-off. And I think the numbers that Mr. Ross raised are very legitimate. We see academic outcomes go up when parents are more engaged in the school and when they're changing from one school to, to another because of locations to be available, to be more involved with the school because of the connection, in some cases, just keeping their school, kids going to the same school when they, when they move. There's a lot of reasons why parents opt out of their particular district, and it's all related to outcomes. It makes a big difference. So, I ever want to see that move away from that direction. It's been very positive that sense, and parents having that flexibility is important to us. And I do appreciate Superintendent's comments. We are investing in the future. It's not immediate. It's, it's longer-term. This is a school that has been there a long time. I'm most impressed with testimony about someone's 75-year-old mother being there. That blew me away a bit, okay? I'll be honest with you. But it was impressive because it does put things in perspective of the fact that schools age, buildings age, we've had wall issues, we've had all kinds of issues, and at some point, it just makes sense that you have to invest in the next 50 years or 60 years that are out there. And so, I'm proud of how long that school has lasted. I also know, listening to the maintenance needs, listening to all the costs of, of trying to renovation, it becomes practical at some point to say you need to start in a, in a much bolder way than that to address these kind of issues. So, I'm very supportive of adding back Inlet View and would like to see that, that accomplished.
Thank you. Uh, Member Wilson.
I am also very supportive of our optional and alternative programs for our parents to choose a program that fits the educational needs of their child in order to find their own success. My kids all went to Denali Elementary, so I have a different perspective of the two-story building. They actually had the pleasure of attending the new school right after it was built and loved the concept of the two-story building. It worked well for them, and all three of them actually were in elementary at the same time. So, I, I, again, I have that different perspective. I, I think the two-story works well for a lot of schools, a lot of students. There's, there's one in Fairview in my neighborhood as well that was rebuilt in the same fashion as they're requesting for Inlet View to be rebuilt. And I did, I also, I, I really do support keeping the kids in their school while a new school is being rebuilt, so they're not bused out to a different school. I know it's difficult on the, the youth, it's difficult on the family. Sorry. I, I, one other thing I wanted to, to mention, Dr. Bishop talked about outcome monitoring for college career life indicator and the graduation rates. And I looked back through that. Our dropout rates for alternative programs, albeit I know that if they're at the higher level, is 0.5%. Graduation rates for our, our alternative programs are 97.6%. And my personal experience with my kids attending Denali, which was an alter, which is an alternative program, all of the kids that we tracked throughout the years in Anchorage, I know it's, it's considered a big city, but it is still very much a small town, those kids all graduated, those kids all choi, chose different options as a secondary education or work or whatever they chose, but I, I honestly can't think of any of those kiddos that chose to, to drop out. Again, I am in very, I, I'm very much a supporter of alternative programs. I got to experience the IB program at Inlet View, and I really appreciate the type of learning and the energy that, that staff has, that the school has, and that the families are, are super excited about. That's what we've heard, or that's what I've heard from everyone testifying today who has kids in the schools, is, is in that school, is that they love it there. They love the staff, they really enjoy the type of learning, and that excites me too. And I, with that support, I also support Inlet View going back on the bond.
Uh, Member Holloman, your comments, if you have any?
Uh, yes, I do support Inlet View being on the bond this year, and I, I support it being in a different footprint primarily because otherwise, the students would have to be moved out of the neighborhood for several years at the least. It is, uh, it is a big expense, and I do hope that members of the community will help us spread the word around the city about why it matters and, and why we need to do it. I'd also add that, that the capacity for schools is a really nebulous number. And again, having taught for well over a decade in schools, I know what 100% capacity is like, and it, it's not a great way to live, and it really limits any kind of options to deal with. You literally don't have room to do something special that you may need to do in order to best serve the students that you've got in front of you at a particular time. 80% may be a real good number. It's a, I have to apologize for my camera turning off, and I think I've got a defective unit here. But it's, it's a theoretical, excuse me, theoretical number just based on square footage, capacity of your cafeterias and some different things like that. It's, it's, there is no hard and fast number that tells you exactly what the right square footage is. But having some space when you have students that, that have a particular interest or need to be able to move around a little bit, to be able to spread out, contract, and, and do things as you need them, is a really valuable thing for schools to have, especially as we may see neighborhoods change and whatnot. The, the other thing that concerns me is taxpayer, I believe the longer we put this off, the more it's going to cost. This is an old building with a lot of problems. We need to get it on the bond, we need to get the bond sold while they're cheap and get construction underway. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Holloman. And so, it's, it looks like we have one board member to renovate and the rest are to put it back on. So, we would charge the administration with bringing back a proposal. What do you need from us now to continue in the process? Because I assume you're going to go back and either add it to what's there or make adjustments? And when can, what does that look like?
So, so, Madam President, to, to respond to that, I, I suppose, I understand the, the intent of the majority of the board. I, I guess what we, we do need to understand though from, from the board is, are we looking at this as being additive to the proposition that the administration presented to the board? Or are we looking that this would be a, a exchange relative value where with the proposal that we would remove some items that are currently on the bond and then add Inlet View and, and reach what would be a commensurate amount on the bond as presented now?
And that's, that is a good question. So, Member Higgins?
I would probably propose the following. You're right, we were, we're kind of switching things possibly from one year to the next if we want to look at it. But if we were to put together the, the ones that meet that criteria and then show us what incrementally, incrementally you would like to see, if we're going to add which ones, and if we don't add, it shows us the cap of where we're at. So, it gives us a few options there to kind of do it. I think that would be a fair approach to try to say, okay, if you want to keep it the way it is, but if you're going to add them, these are the ones we would recommend because you know the needs of the, of the roof issues, you know, the different ones, and you're in a better position than we are to assess the greatest critical need from the deferred maintenance area.
Yeah, and I, I agree with Member Higgins. I think that we are missing, I mean, we are, we are coming into this pretty blind. We, we know what the numbers say, we do not know the need. And so, I think, you know, I know that, and I hope that the CAC Committee understands that this is not a reflection on the work that they've done. It is the, you know, the board's response to what it believes to be the, the, the best next step.
step. And so I, I would be uncomfortable telling you tonight what to cut, what to move, what not to cut, what not to move. I really would. So I would be, for me, I would want the committee to come back with a proposal, an update, given the discussion here tonight.
Yes, Madam President, and I appreciate that. I guess my intent was not to ask for specific modifications, but again, just to understand the intent of the board, whether we would be additive or trying to reach a somewhat commensurate bond amount.
What would you think would be, I know you think the 95 mil would have been the most the community could hold. Is that, is that a correct statement or not?
So, so to the President, we, as part of the planning, we did opine that the, the amount was significant in that it was, it was close to the amount that the district would retire in existing bond debt over the same time period. So that, that amount being about 102 million, we thought that being right around 100 million over a two-year period was about appropriate, that the, the voting public would, would see that as not exceeding what the district is retiring.
Okay. Do you have your hand up? Okay.
I appreciate this back and forth. In looking over the prior CIP, you know, I was struck that a year ago, that, that target for what we might be able to bond for April 22 was at 108.3 million. And I understand that things have changed. I would be interested in, and the background is that we have, we've seen this chart, we've had, we have this disproportionate relationship between the backlog of work that needs to happen and the bond debt that we have accrued. And, you know, I also appreciated in the attachment B that we received, that each year lately, the CIP has shown how the ASD should be spending $80 million a year in renewing district facilities. The current CIP that we received with its recommendations demonstrates the long-term effects of failing to meet that benchmark. And I do think that it's important that the community knows that this is not an Inlet View bond. This is a community bond with a couple dozen schools that you have cobbled together because we're, we're all in this. All of our students deserve safe, functional facilities. And so I would support as many schools as possible being a part of this bond. I would support as many schools as possible being a part of this bond and being cognizant of the need to address our backlog of work.
Thank you. Dr. Bishop?
The gentleman first went over to my right and I don't agree all the time, but one of the things he did mention tonight was, was a very serious consideration when you think about this is, is really, you know, when people talk about, well, why did things change? I mean, you mentioned lots of things have changed and our community and the economy and jobs. This gets, we heard tonight, this can get jobs and then we heard, you know, this would tax us too much. And so the bigger picture, most likely, you know, depending on what you would like to do, I mean, I'd love to really have geo-bonds in our state to take care of lots of infrastructure. But in considering this, a bond that shares responsibility around, you know, is a, a good bond because people see that their area is taken care of as well. So that's a, a good selling point. And, and so is really a reasonable amount. And that's why, although it doesn't get us out of the trouble of, you know, more major maintenance that is written into statute to take care of by bonds, we keep getting behind because of the, the current state of the economy is, is, is the reasoning. So that also sells a bond. So just keeping that in mind about additive or removal, the economics of the bigger picture, where our community is and where we are, is going to matter a lot with this bond, I believe, you know, going into our, our homes.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. Inlet View was at a close vote to be on the bond proposal last time. I think it was three to four for it to not be separated out from the earthquake money because it was a real distortion, I think, of public statement that was mixed in with the earthquake. Because we, I think everybody, well, most people, vast majority of people supported addressing the damages of the earthquake. I know I did. And that's why I supported it, even though I did not support tearing down Inlet View and building a brand new school. But I supported the earthquake repairs is absolutely essential, so I supported that bond package. I had to explain that to lots of folks that, yeah, I'm concerned about Inlet View too, but we've got to get these earthquake repairs funded. So, so I know there's a lot of concern out there about building new schools, given the declining population and the occupancy of the schools close by. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Holloman?
I, I support something a little larger than, than what the administration brought towards us. And my primary concern is that we need to, to get close to the number, the dollar amount of projects that we're adding each year to where we're at least maintaining our deferred maintenance or our unaddressed maintenance, that we're getting things off of that list at about the same rate as things are coming on to it. And of course, sometime in the future, folks in Anchorage will have to bite the bullet and, and fund something a little higher than that yet, simply in order to, to keep our facilities from falling behind. So I like Member Higgins' idea of rearranging the priorities, putting Inlet View in and then having a list in what, what operations considers most critical and the, trying to find the magic number of what we think voters will accept and what we can explain and justify has been the subject in past board meetings. We've got a fairly good track record for some time. Citizens in Anchorage have come out and supported what we've asked for. And if anything, I, I think the public perception of the district has improved over the last couple of years. Obviously a very positive reaction to how the earthquake was handled, both in the immediate things that happened and how we recovered from it. The reaction of the school in terms of our vaccination clinics has generated a lot of positive feedback from the community. I think we're in a good position to, to work on this. Of course, it's, it's always, makes you very nervous to, to pick a number, but I think we can go a little higher and try to at least get to where we're breaking even as needed repairs are coming on to our field revision.
Thank you. Any other comments? Member Donley?
I'll just hold my comments till the end of the meeting. Thanks.
So, okay, I think we are, oh, okay. Dr. Bishop?
Yes, and thank you, Madam President. And another avenue to help ASD as well as everyone around the state is to go back to our legislature to ask them to reinstate bond debt reimbursement. As we talk about this, people aren't thinking these are very large bonds, even in the past they're not very different. The difference is in the state bond debt reimbursement program that was designed, built in with the system of operational monies and capital monies being two separate things, but the state supporting both. The state has pulled back on one, which makes this the difficult conversation. So we had a legislator speak with us today so we can continue that discussion.
Great. Thank you.
Madam President, the superintendent's comments reminded me of something and that's, I'm strongly supportive of the school safety projects that are in the bond as it's before us now. And I hope that they aren't, that funding is not reduced to make room for what appears the board might want to do with Inlet View. I think we should have accelerated and we actually passed an acceleration last bond package of getting those done. There are elementary kids, they're essential safety because we all know that these threats are coming from outside these schools and the remodels to get the office greater control over the, the doors of these schools really paid off at Denali just in the last couple of years. And I would hate to see us chopping away at the school safety projects to make room for a, a major new school for Inlet View.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for the discussion. That was very good. Member Roth. Mr. Roth, any, any other comments or are you good?
No, Madam President. Thank, thank you.
Thank you very much. So we look forward to the revisions. Moving on, Member Donley, you pulled memo random number 25.
Yeah, and next, this is, this is a renewal of the charter of school, family partnership homeschool. I just want to disclose that my twins are in eighth grade in that school now. They will be, I am concerned that this is only a proposed five-year renewal. Typically, we renew charter schools for 10 years. I've read the basis for it. I don't think it's an adequate reason to only do five years. In fact, I think they've got tremendous demand there. Couldn't even get in last year. And I would, I would like to see the population allowed to expand there and also go back to a 10-year renewal. It's not going to affect my kiddos because they're going to be out of the Anchorage School District here and hopefully, if they graduate on time, which they will, I'm very confident in you Shannon and Dalton, but in, in four more years. So it's not going to have a direct impact of the, the five versus 10 years on them. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no more discussion, we're going to move on with that. We have no further public testimony and that brings us to the superintendent's update. Item I.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a couple of quick updates. They were also sent out to families, just as a reminder. We may receive information about the vaccination, the COVID vaccination being available for five to 11-year-olds. And we have organized to offer support to parents who choose to do that, who would like that happen. We will have a vaccination clinic here that also people can get boosters if they would like for Pfizer and Moderna as well. Again, it is a choice of a parent. Older children, younger children, families can come in and we're ready to stand up that service as needed. We also have great news in regard to our symptomatic testing. I shared early on that we had it in eight schools. We transitioned to our 26 title schools that were running short, that had the Abbott ID Now testing kits that we couldn't source out, the quick kits. We have arranged, and it really is a logistical thing with also our nurses taking a, a big part in this, to be able to, if parents would like and their kid, child has symptoms, generally what we do is go home and get tested, get a doctor's note, because sometimes it is just a doctor's note, especially for allergies, things like that. But the testing can be done at school and we have a fast turnaround generally within the same day, if not by the next morning. And so we're quite proud of that and that's going to be rolled out to all schools by the end of this week. There is an electronic signup that parents do once, but after that, just like for all the other testing that people have done, as well as vaccines. But again, only if parents desire to do that, we'll work with them. And then finally, we are gearing up, although we had hoped not to do this, we don't want to surprise, if we have any surprises, we don't want to surprise our families. We had shifts in regard to three weeks of hiatus on a bus. And again, we really targeted areas that were higher socioeconomic and I, I want to share with the board that there was a comment made at the assembly level in public that said, well, you know, just kind of questioning, why would you make socioeconomic because poor parents and wealthier parents have the, you know, it's just about getting a ride. And really, in the view of understanding all that goes into education, there are these, what we call headwinds that constantly hit families. And we want to keep our schools, that we look to improve the outcomes and support, wrap around supports to teachers that not have, and families and kids not have this be an extra added pressure. So with that being said, we are in our fourth hiatus and we are planning for the fifth and sixth, hoping that we don't have to use it. Hope is, you know, that's good to have hope, but it's not a strategy. So we needed to have a strategy just in case anything happens with our drivers that we have going through the classes. If anything falls short or anything is unpredicted. So we are setting up, it would be November 21st till about, you know, mid-December or December 12th and then December 13th through the year, new school year. But we are notifying families, calling them individuals, setting it up. But our goal is to really, truly not have that occur, but we would notify the board as well as we are notifying these families. Again, they are in, there is a rubric and a matrix to select these and we're trying not to affect the same people over and over again. So those are just brief updates to share with the public as well as the board and just continue to do what we can to keep healthy staff and students in schools and keep moving forward. It again is a, just a tough year all around. There's added stressors, but I can tell you our schools and teachers and aides and drivers, they're, they're loving their children and doing good for them, so we're, we're happy to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, response to the superintendent's update?
I just want to share my total enthusiasm and gratitude for the district's ability to roll out COVID vaccinations to families who are interested. And I'll be here with my kiddos soon as they're out of school Wednesday afternoon if things are moving forward in that direction. So it means a lot to a lot of people and I hope that it will help from a public health standpoint as well.
Great. Any other, not seeing any more comments for the superintendent. Oh, I see Andy's hands up.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'm, I'm a case in point where earlier tonight I felt kind of okay. I think our policy of a symptom-free ASD is smart. It made me stay home this evening and I seem to be getting progressively worse. And so it may mean that the whole school board won't have to be replaced in the next election if I come and spread whatever I've got around. But I, I think we're still doing the, the right thing in that direction and it is, it's a tough call. We want to be as open as possible. We want to be the least restrictive environment possible, but we need to keep people safe. And, and I think we're doing as good as a large school district can do on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, might I add, Mr. Holloman, if you'd like a test, I failed to share that the testing in our schools is actually for staff and students because we have a goal of just everyone getting the information, although people have a choice to go where they want. We wanted to offer it for staff and students. So if you let us know, we will certainly give you a swab or a flu shot.
Kathy Bell makes sure that she meets me out on the sidewalk at the edge of the property rather than have me come inside. So I'll get in touch with her. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we are now at item J, Board and Administration comments. I'm on start in the middle today, well, near the middle. Dora?
I want to thank Andy for not coming and sharing, first of all, because he would be sitting right next to me.
Amen.
I had the opportunity to visit and tour Willowa Elementary and meet the entire staff, which was, was a great pleasure. And I asked each of the staff members to share how long they have been in the district and I heard the number 12 quite often, heard 24 once and, and lots of numbers, you know, in between and some new folks there. But again, I, I know we talk about the need for retention and I just want to share my appreciation for those folks that continue to stay, work with our kids and, and really make a huge impact. There's also, I, I wanted to read off a few acknowledgements that I had read about and I, I think they're, they're definitely warranted from our staff. Service High Schools, MTS Azam. Imtiaz Azam has been named the Region Four Assistance Principal of 2022 by the Alaska Association of Secondary School Principals. Ms. Azam is a great leader and inspiration for students and staff. The administration wishes her well in her next round of nominations. District Administrator Brandon Locke of Teaching and Learning was also recognized this week by the Pacific Northwest Council on Foreign Languages. And Mr. Locke, as a recipient of the 2021 Friend of Languages Award, Mr. Locke has been instrumental in the growth of the ASD foreign and immersion language programs, including implementation of Chinese and French immersion, as well as development of the Seal of Biliteracy. Kristi Senden of Chugiyak High School has been awarded the Terry Higley Teacher of Excellence Award for 2021 by Alaskans for language acquisition. This award is the equivalent of the Teacher of the Year Award. And Ms. Senden will represent Alaska at the upcoming Pacific Northwest Council on Foreign Languages and be a candidate for the 2022 PNCFL Teacher of the Year Award. So I just wanted to recognize those folks and congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, Member Higgins?
Thank you. I just first want to thank all the people who testified tonight on Inlet View. I, I hear the issues and concerns and locations and all, but what I heard was a, was a strongly, you know, close-knit type of community. They really love the school. They, they care about the outcome of the kids, and, and they're coming in here, spending the time they did to testify, to share all their views and opinions. I know it's a lot of time for them to do it, but it means a lot. And I appreciate hearing when you hear that much coming in from the public. Also, the same thing with the charter schools. I know that the connection, the availability of the public out there to be able to pick the kind of education they wanted. I have, my kids went to Denali, Montessori. In that sense too, we were involved in that, starting that program a long time ago. And it meant a lot with that connection. Today, they're at Tula Elementary, all six grandkids. And once again, the Montessori program. But you get married to certain programs, and when you do that, the kids are so connected, the parents are so connected. It's just a good outcome for kids. We talk about a lot of times that, you know, one of the concerns is parents want enough involved. Well, this is one of the good things we do, that I'm proud to be supportive of that approach within it. And I appreciate their input too. And also, I just want to thank, thank the superintendent on, on the vaccine and the testing, making that available, being an outreach to the community. It's, it's a big help to parents and an important thing for kids. We're following CDC guidelines on that. We're taking the, the science out there, the professionals in that group, making it available, still leaving it up to the parents. But it's just to me, it, it can make a big difference in, in the schools and kids and making it safe. And I appreciate the efforts with all the staff on that to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Holloman, closing comment?
No, I don't have anything else. Thank you.
All right. Member Jacob?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of things briefly. I did want to, to echo appreciation for the expanded testing and vaccination ability by the district. That's, that's critical. We've been asking for that. And so definitely appreciate that coming to fruition. Did want to express gratitude for everyone who chose to, to come address us tonight from a variety of topics regarding Inlet View. I, I think Ms. Andrews put it very eloquently when she said, we won't be designing a school at this meeting. And I would venture to say, we're not going to do it next meeting either. The important thing to remember is that we're taking up the opportunity to give the community a voice as to how it supports public education, which I think is very important. Lastly, we do have a couple subcommittee meetings coming up prior to our next full board meeting on the ninth. We have comms and governance at 3:30, and 4:30, and finance, I believe, is 15th, the 15th at noon. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I just had a question of parliamentary procedure. I had appealed the decision of the chair, and then we took an at ease. When we came back, we proceeded without dealing with my appeal of the decision of the chair. And I was just wondering under what parliamentary basis my appeal was not taken up when we returned from the at ease?
There is no parliamentary basis, Mr. Donley. I absolutely forgot. So if you want to bring that back up again now, you may do so. I really forgot it.
Oh, okay. Well, Madam Chair, I, I do believe, I want to really understand what the basis for your action was. If the basis was, the person was, the instruction was the person to not be disruptive, I am supporting the chair in that. If the basis was that the individual's videotaping when somebody didn't like it, I don't support that. So...
And, and that's, and I can clarify that. My, my, first of all, for the record to be quite clear, I'm over here, they're over there. I really could not see what was going on over there. I knew something was going on. It was disruptive to the, for me, in my judgment, it was disruptive to the process of the meeting. And that, and so I did acknowledge that the young lady was having some difficulties. I did not ask anybody to leave the room, but I did feel there was a disruption. I did not ask anyone to leave.
Okay. If, if, if the chair is making it clear that the basis of the chair's action was to prevent disruption, that I'm, I agree with that. This as long as the decision of the chair was not to discontinue a member of the public videotaping.
I didn't know what he was doing, Member Donley, but whatever it was, it, it was disruptive. It took my attention. So, and I think had that been your first question, that we would have probably not have had to lose time by taking an at ease. But you, I mean, you have made an assumption that just simply was not true.
Well, I believe I did ask the chair what the basis was, and the basis was identified as the witness was concerned with the videotaping.
It was a disruption. Perhaps I could have used a better word.
With that clarification, I'm, I'm okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Lessons? No, Dr. Bishop? No, ma'am, no further questions. So I have a couple of reminders for, for my fellow board members, just a few. Please get your legislative priorities into K D so that we can start building that document and, and prioritizing everything. We will have a, we are scheduled to have a Alaska Association of School Board training on the 16th. We have not changed that. So we will do that from three to five on the 16th. And this month, November, is Alaska Native and American Indian Heritage Month. So there will be all kinds of wonderful things going on in our schools, and I'm sure at Alaska Native Charter, Cultural Charter School. Our legislative luncheon is planned for December 10th. We'll send you a, the, we'll send that to you in an email. And, but we're combining it with the assemblies, our joint assembly meeting, which is also on the 10th. So we are moving that meeting up to nine. So we'll send you that information. Just want to, want you to have as much information. So on the 10th, we will have our joint assembly from nine to 11, and then our legislative luncheon from one to 2:30. Oh, wait, one to, from 12 to 1:30. Okay, great. And for those of you, for those of you who are attending the conference this weekend, there's, if you, the, a school board conference, it's at the Hilton, but there is a virtual option if you'd like to attend virtually. And there's still time to register if you want to do that. And my only other comment is just to have a moment of silence for Eugene Haberman. Eugene passed away unexpectedly. I'll miss his, I'll miss him. I learned a lot from Eugene. So if we could just have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sub moved.
Second. Thank you. Motion to second.